You're doing a jail. We could not write on any in our department. Any questions? Ms. Wapert?
No.
Personnel?
No.
Okay. All right, some months we have more than others. I mean, you know, it seems like it. It all is always reflects to the jail or in that area because they do go through a lot of personnel in there. Hey Tommy, we do have a couple and did they come out of mandate? Have they graduated mandate or didn't we have two?
They had one graduating.
Yeah.
One's gotta go back and repeat EVA.
Okay.
So they have to redo it back there. He's got to redo it.
We've replaced those two, haven't we? I mean, as far as in the, then they come from the jail? That was last month, I think, or month before.
Well, whatever, came from the jail and was still in.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
As far as position.
Okay. Move down to number four. This is the board appointments and proclamations. Uh, we have four A proclamation, adoption, awareness. Month of November, the month of November proclamation and we've. We've done this, I know for four, maybe five years. Um, and everybody fine with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Uh, go down four B. This is proclamation hospice month of November. And, uh, everybody fine with that? Month of November hospice.
Great organization.
All right. And move down to four C, resolution R dash thirty-eight dash twenty-three. Uh, this is reappointment of D L Moore, the alcohol beverage, uh, control board. Uh, most people know him as, um, as Peanut Moore, you know, in Salem. Uh, he's a good board member, missed very few meetings, you know, and, uh, he has, uh, agreed to serve. Yeah, everybody fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
I've worked with him quite a bit.
Okay. All right. All right, move down to four D, resolution R dash thirty-nine dash twenty-three. Uh, this is reappointment of, uh, Robert Russell, also to the alcohol beverage control board. And Robert's been the chairman for several years and, uh, he is, uh, agreed to serve home if we so please. So everybody's fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Most people know him as Smokey. Smokey Russell. I didn't know his name was Robert for years, you know. All right, move down to number five. This is approval of our splash or capital, uh, capital equipment. Um, we have a request here to purchase two vehicles. Um, plus equipment for the Dade County Sheriff's Office. Uh, Tommy Bradford, Major, you gonna come up? Talk to us about the fifth? And these are, these are splosh. Be.
Cause I don't have it.
You emailed me a list?
I was gonna say, was it bids?
Yeah, the bids.
We don't have them over here?
You don't have them.
I didn't. What list did you email me?
Maybe they're free.
Yeah.
You don't hurt to ask, Tommy.
I can, can look.
It's what I like, a major that's prepared.
I thought they had them up there. Usually I'll pick off my off guard.
Oh. Have you got it, Don?
I'll go find it.
Yep.
Let's go to the next one while we're waiting on it.
And that's what we're gonna do.
Get the next one.
We're going down, I'm, because this one here is gonna be, we're going to actually, um, postpone it anyway. Because this is on the video surveillance coverage expansion and, uh, Phil can comment on that. I mean, they, it is bid out and, uh, you know, so we really don't have anything to bother them on that. It's just to let you, give you an update on what's going on.
Yeah, on that one, we're looking at bidding out for some cameras at the sports complex to where we can. In the parking lots, actually see the cars and their tag numbers. We've had issues with people coming in doing donuts and other things, so when we get our pictures back, we can't, we can't see the vehicle. And that's all we can see. Can't tell what kind or make or tag numbers or anything. So we're looking at purchasing some new, new cameras and, uh, stuff for that. But I had a conversation today with, um, our IT guy and I think we're gonna, we're gonna put an IRFP, but we're gonna look at this further, what we can do, maybe in-house.
Yeah. It actually went down right after we finished the, uh, the people did the, uh, ceiling of the parking lot and the lines and, uh, wouldn't, they, it wasn't there two nights? And someone went in and, uh, they tore a third of that up almost down there just by doing donuts round, 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 round. And went all the way down to the asphalt, so we had to redo some of that. So we kinda, that kinda put the icing on the cake. We had cameras, all right, but all you could see was a little black car out there going around, around there. Every once in a while, they'd wave out there, you know, like they knew.
They might actually tie into them IEDs where.
I've actually had a few phone calls where there was incidences involving a, um, sixteen, seventeen-year-old female that had called. And then we didn't have, we had a video we could see, but we couldn't tell what went on. So that's the other concern of mine is that.
Yeah, it's more, more serious, you know, different things, you know, but, uh, but we'll have something to report on next month. I mean, I mean, this was something we could. Okay. You got that?
Yeah, I got it pulled up.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Where I emailed it. Uh, so. We were looking at getting two cars that he has available that we can probably get by December. Uh, he quoted a price, this is Prater Ford, uh, forty thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and sixteen cents. Which is high. Uh, the extended warranty price is, uh, which is the five-year, hundred thousand, basically like a bumper-to-bumper warranty. For two thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. And that brings the total for the vehicle, if you include the warranty, to forty-two thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and sixteen cents. The watch guard video system is nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. But I believe there's been some body cams that's been purchased. So that may take about nine hundred of that off because we wouldn't need the body cams with that. So probably. Around eighty-seven hundred for the camera system. Then the side ride, the stropping, uh, per vehicle, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. For the lighting is eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixteen cents. That's for the equipment, the cage, um, the bumpers, everything that goes with it. We'd looked at maybe trying to salvage some of the stuff from some of the other vehicles, but the CD trot, it, 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 they won't, it won't work together. So, uh, that's not even, um. An option now. Uh, the car radio, um, Alex had a bid, I think I got twenty-five hundred on here. That was a, I think he sent me the bid, it is actually twenty-nine hundred instead of twenty-five hundred there. And then the, uh, radar, the unit, we're down to like one or two of those. Uh, that, that's all we have available now. So I was gonna see about getting one of those in each of the cars and they're twenty-one, ninety-five a piece. So with everything included, it would be unfortunately sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Which is a lot more than they used to be.
Yep. Don, that's, uh, would be a hundred percent splosh.
It would be, is that increasing that sixty-nine, one eighty-one included in that, taking that twenty-five hundred to twenty-nine?
No, but you would have to take off whatever the, the body cam.
Oh, you're gonna take the body cam?
Is that the nine thousand? Is that what you had on here for nine thousand, five seventy-nine or is that?
Yes, that's the.
You deduct that, okay.
Yeah, that's the body cam with the.
Eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think the, whatever the body cams were, I think y'all just bought.
Be about eighty-seven hundred there. Is that watch guard?
We can take that much off because we don't need those.
So it's about four hundred or what, how much, how much do you take off?
Uh, what's the body cams about? Nine hundred?
What'd you say?
Were they about nine hundred?
I, I don't know.
I think they're around nine hundred, so. We'd take that much off of it because they're not needed. And then we'd have to add four hundred to the, the radio. So basically. Take off five hundred of that, so it'd be sixty-eight thousand, six hundred.
So basically what you're saying is leave it like it is, since, since we don't know what the body camera is and then go from there.
Yeah.
So have to exceed this price, yeah.
It is a hundred percent splosh and it is budgeted.
Yep.
And that's for two cars.
That's for two.
We always budget two cars a year or, or try to.
Yeah, try to, yeah.
How many miles are on them?
Let's double that, right?
Some that, or we got.
They got some in.
See, I think the highest one we've got right now is near two hundred thousand.
That's what we asked Billy yesterday and that's about one ninety-something, one ninety-two.
It's like one ninety-something.
And then, uh, the other ones are around, um, one seventy-five, one eighty, you know.
So they're gonna get shuffled down and then something at the end gonna get.
So basically the high mileage ones will pretty much come off.
Yep.
And we'll row the highest mileage on the road patrol because they like us to get them off at, I think, about one sixty. Hundred and sixty thousand is what the insurance, I think, kinda wants them off at.
Right, right.
So we'll take those and put them in like court service or the schools, uh, some one that's not running emergency calls and stuff, so.
So at this point though, will we be, will we be seeing two more cars on high mileage coming up for gov deals or something?
Yes.
Yeah, so basically there's not any.
Forgiveness, always time to put them back.
There's not any sentence somewhere where we're paying insurance on.
Right now, I think two spares that we kinda have to keep at the moment. To kinda, because when a car goes down, we have to put them in something.
Sure.
Usually you'll keep two available for spares, but that would be, or like the jail will use, like to transport one to the hospital or something.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
That's, so usually we'll keep two to the side for spares.
Okay.
So, but other than that, that's, that's it. We don't have a lot, a lot out there, but just sitting there. We usually try to get those to Billy and get those sent to, like, uh, gov deals, I think is when he's putting them on.
The last three we've, the last three we purchased, they've come in?
The.
We bought some a while back. I mean, they've come, they've come through yet, because I know there was a lag time on them, do you?
The only one that I've purchased was that, that one that I had, because I've redone.
It might've been last year when it was.
Yeah, I think we removed.
It was a lag on them.
Yeah, we moved some vehicles around and I didn't need.
Okay.
We skipped kind of a year, uh, this past year, so, um, and then we've lost one in a crash that was totaled, well, actually two. But one of them was through the drug task force. I think they totaled that other one, didn't they?
Yep.
The, the Dodge, the one we got from task force.
I hadn't come yet, I don't think yet, they may have. Okay, I mean, this is kinda, you know, it kinda looks like this might be the new normal, I mean, as far as. Because y'all don't have any really what you'd call, I used to call them bells and whistles or whatever, you know. This is pretty much what you gotta have.
Yeah, we went down and took like, we took off a lot of lots that just, because it started out, one bid we got was nineteen thousand dollars for lots.
Just for lots.
Yeah, this trucker lighthouse, we've never used before. They're up in Chattanooga, they're out of Na- Nashville or Knoxville. And they come in at the low bid, uh, they beat Ringgold by probably about two thousand. And then Donna who, uh, was at eighteen thousand, but then we took some lights off too, which made them come down even more.
Yeah. All right, what do you think? I mean, we're not bothering with the opinion, we'll put it on the consented yet and if y'all fine with it, you know, fine with it. I mean, I, I know you, you, you know, you do everything you can, that's one thing about Tom and they do everything they can to get the lowest price, you know. And it's, but today, that's awful what that right there is gonna be.
Yeah, because I think before I was injured, I think we were getting them for around fifty thousand.
Forty-nine.
Twenty-six, the, the twenty-six is double.
Twenty-six for the vehicles and then quit.
Twenty-six thousand price here is double.
It's ridiculous.
So we are talking about a hundred and forty, right? Two?
Yeah, two.
Yep.
These are Prater.
Not exceed this price right here.
These are on the lot?
He's, he's, he said they were available. And he said we should be able to get them by December.
That's not bad.
All right, not exceed sixty-nine, one eighty-one, thirty-six, that's right, okay.
For each car.
For each car.
Yeah, for each car. Put that on the consented, yeah. Anything else you got?
Nope.
All right, we appreciate it. Got plenty of backup.
Felt like I was forced into that.
Antimodation, Andrew, I didn't say nothing. Yeah, intimidation. All right, let's move down to, um, to, let's see, here we got that one. Move down to five C, boy who covered the video, videos for violence, Rodney Ross. He's our chief out at New Salem. How you, Rodney?
Hey. I wanna go back to when we first brought these trucks up and there was some consideration about that maybe some of that art money could help out on it. The way we're looking at it right now, we'd be going away with the next two splashes. And that's a quite a long period and, uh.
No, I don't, I'm not necessarily in agreement with that opinion, like, because that, that kinda got. Surprised on this last meeting, I mean, when you talked about it and, uh. As far as I'm concerned, we're still talking about spending the total on the three trucks that we know we have to have, the tankers that we know for sure what we got to have. I'm for still going and using the ARP money, about a hundred, another hundred thousand on each truck.
Yeah, well, that's.
That's what.
What did you say about not, not about doing away with, what did you say about sploshing?
It was, last month, when it came up, we was saying we were gonna be using the next two splashes.
Oh, for all of it?
Yeah.
Lease purchase, a lease purchase deal.
Lease purchase.
That's what, yeah, lease purchase, huh?
But I am not, in no way in favor of.
They'd be cutting it thin because you never know what's gonna come up on y'all, on any of you, you know, yeah, yeah. So what are you, what are you asking tonight? I mean, you wanting to?
Well, tonight, we were just supposed to come back and Don was gonna check on about y'all's end of the lease purchase, because.
So do we need, so are you four using ARPA or not using ARPA?
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand for each. So it's gonna be about three hundred, a little over three hundred.
Per truck or total?
Per truck.
Per truck, okay.
Per truck.
Okay.
And we know we need three and we'll talk about the fourth one later on, but we don't know about it for sure. We know about the three for sure though. Doing a lease purchase is okay on some things, but we've gotten trouble in the past on that and I don't. I'm for using the ARP money and getting the trucks that we need and getting them on roller.
Yeah, because we're way out.
Two years, two years out.
I know, it's hard to believe, you know, that's way out. Where did you come, I had a question too about, well, my answer here, what, what was the deal? I had some questions about that bid that you came in with my, on, uh, the trucks or something. Had a couple of people had requested, uh, you know, was questioning the price, something about the price difference and, uh, you know. The three bids, you know, you had, you came in, you know, and, uh, yours was quite a bit higher and you explained to us something about it, you know.
That was the toll and then that was, for number one, we've got some of those trucks in the county now, we know.
Yeah.
You know, but the second thing and one of the important things we were looking at was the warranty on it.
Yeah.
It was far much better than any of the others that we got quoted on.
Yeah.
And in our business, that's.
So what are we looking on the three now? We're looking at three at of.
Same, same ones. Same as that truck.
With the warranties, like you said, like. Yeah, that's the ones you explained to the, the warranty.
Yes.
And what was the total price of the eight per, per trucker and all three of them together, do you?
The, uh, price of the trucks, if we do the ones they want, was four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and one dollars. And then you got a discount off of that, is that not correct, over the second and, for the second and third unit?
Yes.
The, and the, the price is, there is about sixty, seventy thousand dollars difference in price. But from the cheapest truck to this truck, on the truck itself, there's a, there's no warranty on the first one. There's a two-year warranty bumper-to-bumper on the one we're looking at. And then on your pump, on the first truck, there's zero warranty on the pump and the truck we're looking at's got a seven-year warranty on the pump. And then if you go back on down, then they, both trucks has got ten-year warranty on the paint. But the other one's got a twenty-year substructure warranty, which is on the frame of the, of the chassis of the truck. That's the difference, that, that's why we looked.
For the money then.
For the money, we looked at that for the warranty aspect of it and the actual trucks themselves. You know, you, you got more horsepower on the truck and the warranty's better. So for pulling the mountain with the water, that's.
Went all over the county, we need extra power.
Yep.
There's a little difference in, in those with a gallon per minute, is that enough to make a?
So with the toll.
Fifteen hundred or twelve?
So with the toll, what I did was, it's a fifteen hundred gallon a minute pump, but it's rated at twelve fifty. The reason for that is these trucks have to pass pump test every year. You know, every year these, you know, these pumps get wire and tear on them. And, you know, if you have one, it'll, it'll flow fifteen hundred gallon a minute, but it's rated at twelve fifty, so that's all it's gotta put out for a pump test.
So what you're saying is in ten years down the road, when it's eighty percent of its max pump, we're still past the pump test?
Yes.
The, um, remainder of the money, we got, we'll, we'll put a hundred thousand.
That was just.
Are we looking at doing, um, possibly, I know we've looked at everything, but, uh, if we do that, are, are we looking at possibly doing a, a lease purchase on it? Or taking all of it out of splosh? Was that the money?
Hey, I was looking at it was, they had agreed, I believe y'all agreed to use your total splosh amount, which was two seventy-five. And then you put another hundred. That is, is exactly a hundred or is it a little more than a hundred? Yeah, it's a little bit more, I think it's probably on here, I just don't see it right off the, it's not separated out for me, but.
So is that?
That's what I, that was my impression, what we were doing and what we were under, so.
Is that pump not under warranty though?
Yes, it is under warranty.
It's got a seven year.
Yeah, seven year limited.
So it's actually, it's actually a hundred and fifty-four thousand out of art money to cover the cost.
Per truck?
Per truck.
And that's with the nicer truck with the warranty in.
You're talking about that?
That, that hundred and fifty-four thousand is kind of out of ARP, may ARP as well.
So if each department's. If you stick within each department type of budget, two hundred and seventy-five thousand per department, right?
Right, yes.
And your budget is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, less a hundred thousand, that's still three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. You're still short to, you know, whatever that is, two seventy-five, huh?
Fifty something?
Yeah, fifty plus thousand. The what?
Second, third truck will go down a little bit because we're getting three from them.
It shows that they'll go down ninety-two hundred dollars per truck.
Okay, well, it's still.
But you're still fifty-four thousand short.
Right, that's right, fifty-four thousand short. I mean, so there's still, I mean, do we use the other splosh funds or, because I mean, I mean, if you're looking at splosh as an individual departmental splosh. Purchase, then, you know, you're gonna have to dip across the board and everybody, instead of two seventy-five, everybody'd have to get a little less than two seventy-five. Unless we reallocate splosh. I, you know, I don't know, maybe, maybe, maybe not.
Don't need to go there, but.
I, I wouldn't either.
That goes back to the lease purchase thing, you know, you brought up, I know.
Yeah, so.
You know.
Lease purchase is, I, I mean.
Four, four portion.
Ninety-nine percent sure, I mean, we'll double check, but it is allowed under the current referendum. Now, you take the risk of, what year we, we're in year two of the splosh, which means we've got four more years of a splosh. Depends on how long we get, um, the term is, and then you'd have to build in interest for that. And I mean, I, interest rates are not as cheap as they were. I don't think it would be fifty-four thousand dollars a piece, I would hope. Or unless you use more ARPA funds.
I mean, I don't know if I'm in the right place, but it's all coming from one bucket.
Right, so.
I tell you, you got ARPA and splosh.
Seven departments.
But I mean, I'm saying for the fire department.
Right, if we've got seven departments and then we also, of course, include mountain rescue, that's one point nine million, one, one point nine five million dollars. Set aside for fire services at Dade County. I mean, that's pretty important, property, life, protection of life and property in Dade County. You know, do you look at this from a standpoint of a shared pool of money or do you look at it as individual money? And then if, if it's individual, I mean, if we finance it, you know, you do have the interest. My dilemma with it, be, what it, where, however you look at this, is if we can avoid any storms in the next four years. Be able to build whatever kind of building we're gonna do for animal control, elections. And, um, finish out the, uh, the, the El courthouse, which we're getting close. And then the, um, the depot, that's just a lot of buildings, that's a lot of capital projects pending. But we can, we can make it work.
Hopefully though.
And that's only with three trucks. If we do a fourth truck.
I know, you're looking. We may not be able to do the fourth truck.
Right, right.
So this is. This is what I'm gonna recommend from, from my part, this is the only way I would bother guests on this and I'm good with it. If we take the three departments that want the trucks, take the two seventy-five, get the remainder out of art, but it does not overflow into the next splosh if it does or does not pass.
Gotcha.
And I am not good with financing or lease purchase because that runs into another.
I'm not either.
Splosh, so I'm, I'm good with the two seventy-five per department and take the extra out of art and I'm good with that if it's paid for in the next, in this splosh cycle.
And I'm with Philip a hundred percent.
I really don't wanna finance anything. I'm not being an ugly. Not with the interest like it is, but can we do that and, uh, because we, you know, if we go, like he said, I feel good about that. If, if we can guarantee it'll be paid off by that four year.
Oh, sure, 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 sure. I mean, yeah, you can do that.
Make it happen, you know.
You can do that, as long as the order's placed in there, I guess we can get it at the price it's being quoted for.
When is it, actually, I know you, like, okay, you said they're a year, two years out on the trucks.
Right.
Well, what about the money? When, when you, what do you got, half, half of it to order or what?
So the way it was explained to me, to get the ninety-two hundred dollars off, you can either, you know, pay for trucks up front. Or pay for them as they come in. You know, so that knocks off, you know, from the, you know, the back end of it. And then with ordering, you know, multiple trucks, you know, one truck will be one price and the other two will be a little bit less.
So.
So that's.
Only one will be less or two will be less? Two will be less.
Two on that, I thought it was one.
The bottom line on there, talking about the, the chassis and the deductions, eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars for two. You only get that on two. I think one's full price and two is ninety, whatever, ninety-two hundred off if you get, getting three trucks. So, Don, that takes a, that takes a mathematician now to tell us what the, the bottom line is.
The note on that, it says if you pay for the chassis part when it's purchased, so.
So that's what you need.
We need to get that, get it locked in at this price.
Yeah, how much, uh, yeah, I think we're all in agreement, you know, we want to make this happen. But how much you think we're gonna, are we gonna be able to actually gov deal some of those other trucks and get some money out of it? Is that what you're planning on doing? I mean. But I mean, you're gonna pull these, you know, you've got trucks you think, yeah, that will be able to get some money, you know, and it, and you'd be surprised what some of the things bring on gov deals. You know, so that's gonna, that's something kind of a ace in the hole we can use.
It will.
Yeah.
So I'm just going back to the Midwest and the Fouts brothers, I mean, can you purchase some warranty? And what would that purchase price be? I mean, I did on my truck.
You can, it's just the insurance is what it is, like anything, yeah.
Right.
But that's, uh, the manufacturer.
Instead of seven years, you might get it for ten years.
But I'm not sure on a fire truck, I mean, I don't know on emergency vehicle, how that works, except because, you know, you're dealing with.
About the best you're gonna get is two or three years, at the most.
So where, where are these going?
But that's a difference of, that's seventy-six thousand dollars.
What, Don?
That's seventy-six thousand dollars savings per truck from the lo- highest bid to the lowest bid.
I knew it was a lot, it's quite a big difference.
I mean.
What you can do, we can, we can get on.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
Find out exactly, because there's gotta be somebody out there that can and it might come in, if it came in at half that, that's a lot of money, you know, saved right there.
And it's on the pump, right?
No, it's.
On the, probably the truck, because the trucks are actually not the same trucks.
Yeah, I got you.
So you're looking freight lighter M two, one oh six, or you're looking at a freight lighter one oh eight S D? They both got Cummins engines in them, but one of the three hundred and sixty horsepower and the other one's a four hundred horsepower.
Right.
So that's gonna be your, that'll be your biggest difference in that warranty.
Allison, it's, both have.
Allison transformations.
Allison transformations is what they're playing on.
Midwest doesn't show, on here doesn't show any warranty on the truck.
That's the one I had, one, two year. All we need to do is go ahead and, and if we're going for all in agreement and it'll, go ahead and get these things for the cabin chassis or the chassis. Whatever we need to put, agree to. Whatever we need to put, agree to deny, you know, and then whatever, you know, get, get the things ordered. Then we can actually, if, Don, if you want to check on this warranty, because you're talking about what we can do is pay for them when we order them, the cabin chassis. That would be the thing to do, right? I mean, and then, but are they going to make us obligate to that warranty when you order those cabin chassis? I wonder, I mean, is that, not like, with the brand that you're talking about, I mean, if they, if you ordered that particular truck. You know, I don't know.
So it's a hundred twenty.
Y'all ones have been dealing with them. Because we're talking about ordering the number three, the bid that was the highest bid. If, if, if a warranty wasn't on it, are the trucks comparative enough that y'all would, y'all could, are they actually, what you, you could live with? I mean, as far as the trucks themselves, even if you didn't order the one mass, or the one we talked about, the higher.
So Midwest, from my understanding, is an all poly body. What happens when, you know, you hit poly and you crack it? What happens?
You're talking about the frame?
No, the body.
The body, okay, not the, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Seventy-six thousand.
How would you crack it? I mean, I just don't know.
I mean, just, I mean.
It's the difference in plastic and metal.
It's just a.
It's, it's pretty tough though.
Yeah, it's tougher than.
Yeah.
Well, for seventies, that's two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, you could fix a lot of.
Yep.
Cracks for two hundred and twenty, quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah.
I'd at least try, huh?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I'm, I don't know if I just am missing something or missing information or just not processing it. But I don't know that I, I could, I don't know, I'm just, I'm not. I'm not, I, I don't get the, I mean, the why we're going with the top of the line for all, all of them. If, if there's places that already do have trucks, I don't, I guess I'm just, I'm missing some information somehow, I don't know.
Well, the question is, is if we, you know, that, the truck there, you're looking at what seventy thousand dollars more there, that last one.
Yeah, the last one.
That one because, and mainly it's because of the, of the warranty that you're getting with it, you know, and but what, Don.
Stronger truck also.
So would it, could it that go, like, maybe one of those stronger trucks go to a place like New Salem that needs it? And then a, maybe a weaker truck go somewhere else that's.
What we're trying to do is keep all the same trucks.
Moving, get the better price.
So they're, they're all different.
Yeah, those are different.
Yeah, they're different engines.
Okay, I see.
Couple of them are the same on the engine, but they're different on somewhere else.
We think it's a lower.
I think, I think they've done a lot of research and we need to go with what they've recommended because they know what they need more than we do, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'd have to say the same because I just, I just don't know enough about it to.
It's life safety, I mean, we've put a lot of money into a lot of stuff for that.
They don't make them like they used to.
And that warranty though was pretty much, is that, was that just kind of an option or did they, could you, because I'm, I'm listening to what Don said too. It would be something if we got, you know, actually did some research, went down Monday and found a company that would give basically a twenty-year warranty or whatever for fifty thousand or twenty-five thousand, you know. And we still have a good truck, but we wouldn't have to get the warranty. They'd probably still put a two-year warranty with it, but was that an option that they offer you a two, a five and a twenty?
No, it's two, two years period. I might as well, I'll, I'll fire truck, either one, two, or I think there's one company offers a three year.
But this one only offers a.
Two year.
No, I'm talking about your last one, you, it's, it's.
The last one is a two year.
Yes.
So.
I mean, are we.
Heartline, what do you think? That's a lot of money, that's why, you know.
It's a lot of money, but I'm, I'm, the reason I'm good with is this conversation was brought up because of a want and then a need. The want was another item on the docket and the need come up was the trucks. So I'm good with the need at this time on this. As long as it stays in this splosh and we take the remainder out of art.
What about you, Mitch? We're not voting, I'm asking your opinion and I get your opinions and we'll either, but it only consent agenda or not.
The, and I know you're going to read the agenda back after, this consent agenda, what is the amount, when you take all this chassis part off? So we know what we're, I mean, if we just look at it like it is, it's one point two, almost one point three million dollars. For three trucks that they want, but you got to take the chassis part off and.
So it's a hundred and twenty thousand per truck for the chassis, right? That's upfront. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we'll have to pay upfront in order to lock the price in on the ton. And then from there, we'll have to do some math over here real quick.
And that would satisfy the art money we're talking about?
Yeah, right. We'll try to come up with something real, with the next.
One point two nine six million.
So it's just saving the ninety-two hundred or there's another step?
I'm good, I'm good.
One point two nine six.
A lot of time we set up here in all these figures and we're looking at them, but you know, when it says if you pay for the chassis up front, you get this and then it's kind of confusing. As to when it gets down to the bottom dollar, what is the bottom dollar because?
She's calculating.
One point two, one point five, you know, I mean, it's a lot of money.
I mean, when, what did you say the deadline is? I mean.
End of this month.
The end of this month.
Yeah.
That'll be with the second and third.
Of no way.
The second and third truck will be four hundred and twenty thousand five oh one.
So the first truck still gets the eighty-six hundred dollar discount for purchasing the chassis when it's, or is that only the second and third truck? It gets it?
All, all three trucks get the ninety-two hundred dollars.
First truck will be.
Miss Bradford?
Should probably be able to do that in my head, but, four twenty-nine seven oh one.
Well, it's a, it's a lot of money, but it's also a place that it's definitely needed. I struggle. I still kind of struggle with, I know it's a warranty, but I still kind of struggle with the, we have to have the top, top truck, but.
Less is the top truck in those three bids, that's nowhere near the top truck.
Right, 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 yeah.
It's just a matter, to me, it's getting what you're, when you look at the warranty and everything, it's getting what you pay for.
Right, yeah.
But I, I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah, and I would like to see if there was a, a purchase warranty afterward, after fact.
Oh, you mean like to?
To add to it if, you know, like Don said, just to make a phone call and, and see, it's still, it's a possibility, even if it's not put on here.
Let me ask this question, these three trucks, if we purchase them, what is the age of the trucks that we're replacing?
Mine is eighty-eight. Eighty-eight, eighty-nine?
They were both close to the same time, the same, yeah.
Thirty-five years.
This brother's ninety-three.
We don't have, they've been on. Well, they purchase new. I know a lot of time we get, would you, thirty, thirty-something years on them?
Thirty, thirty-five years of trucks that we're replacing here, so.
Uh, you got to guarantee us you'll keep these thirty-five.
Somebody will.
Wait a minute, I won't be, I won't be here in thirty-five years anyway.
I know, I probably won't.
All right.
That's good, that's a good life though.
I think we've, all come, can keep on closing, we'll go ahead and.
Thank you for being patient.
Appreciate it.
So we finally think we got it here, it's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand in splosh, four hundred and forty-five thousand seven oh three in A R P A. And basically without doing the chassis, you, it was one point, one million three hundred fourteen thousand nine oh three for three of, as is. By paying for the chassis early, you save forty-four thousand two hundred, I think, and which was bringing, it's one point, one million two hundred seventy thousand seven oh three total. So out of that, that's where we break down the, the one million two seventy, uh, splosh, which would be three two seventy-fives.
Yes, three two seventy-five.
Three, yeah, three two seventy-fives, it comes to eight twenty-five, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand in splosh, leaving a balance of four hundred and forty-five thousand seven oh three out of A R P A. Does that help, Robert?
Yeah, I'm just confused with it, because that number you gave, the one point, one million two hundred seventy-seven oh three is on here, but then down under it, it's got that, like, we haven't done this yet.
No, I think that's figured into that.
So that is the total of three, three vehicles that they took. And we have that in A R P.
What we need out of it.
We do.
I mean, yeah, not the whole.
Not the whole, but what we need. You understand how that now, what, on your consent agenda, what we're looking at?
I think so. We'll, we'll write it up, but.
And then we can, you know, if it's not, we can correct it, but, because like, Heartline, you know, he said, it's, this is not some want, this is a need, we got to do it. I mean, these trucks are thirty-five years old, but they're, they look good, you know, looking at them cosmetically, but, you know, they're already starting to have crawling and you don't want to have the crawling when you get on a fire, you know, I mean, it's, it's critical.
The thought too is that we're not going to receive these for two years.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right.
So that's.
And, and I feel even at the end, you know, when you, we do put these trucks out, we sell these used ones, there's a lot of real small departments, so that, you know, we may even accumulate, you know, seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars out of three to sell them on go deals, I mean, that's just a guesstimate, but. So we got that money coming in too, so. So, okay, we'll split that on consent agenda, Don, and if you can come over and we need to correct you, we will, I guess, you know. All right. All right, let's move down to five D, got the industrial I D A, industrial authority infrastructure expansion, Trevon Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prior to the I D A meeting last month, they, both the Dade County Water and Sewer Authority and also the city of Trenton, they're working on a, a project for the industrial park, but sewer to connect to Trenton Pressing. And also, the Water and Sewer Authority got a one point two million dollar grant approved from, it's a federal grant that's going to run eight-inch water lines all the way through the existing industrial park, connecting at the bottom of the hill by roof curb systems, all the way around through the industrial park, out to Vanguard Drive and of course out to Highway eleven. It also, and doesn't have to do with this request, but it also, that part of that grant also improves the water line from Highway eleven over to the top of what we would commonly call Hooker Hill on, on Highway two ninety-nine. Puts eight-inch lines all the way around. What it does through the industrial park, not only is it going to get water to Trenton Pressing's new building, and I, I know some of the commissioners went through and seen the, seen the building that basically was raised up overnight, it's pretty impressive. But it'll also do redundant backup for all the residents on the north end of the county. Prior to this, and even now, if there's a water main break out here around the square, everybody on the north end won't have any water. But when they get this done and all the way through the industrial park, then they will be able to redundant backup. So they'll be able to swap, swap this off, and the only people that will be without water is from there to, to Vanguard Drive, basically. So that'll save, because it's happened before, I can't remember when, but it did happen, where the entire north end of the county was without water. They asked the industrial development authority since we have splosh funds available for land acquirement and also industrial infrastructure, if we would help in the cost for the water company, it would be kind of like helping with their part because it's a matching fifty-fifty grant. And then the sewer authority or the city sewer, we met with the mayor and he explained the need to be able to come up the hill to the top of the hill to connect the sewer there. So we're requesting, they voted to, to ask the commission to use some of the splosh money that's set aside for the industrial development authority of a hundred and twenty thousand total, forty-five would go to the water company, seventy-five would go to the city of Trenton. And it would be basically to help them produce sewer and water past the new Trenton Pressing facility and connect Vanguard Drive to the top of the, or the water to the top of the hill. And I apologize, it's not Vanguard Drive anymore that goes in front of the, but I can't remember the name.
It's a new, the unpaid.
Yeah, it's, the road used to be Vanguard Drive that goes all the way through that we're going to pave.
What is the name of that, the actual true road? Have y'all named it?
I didn't, Mayor, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
I just walked in.
I can't remember it, but it's, it's the part from, from roof curb systems to the top of the hill.
The road formerly known as.
Formerly known as Vanguard Drive.
Already formerly known as Prince.
Yep.
Vanguard Drive still comes off North Main to the cul-de-sac, then the cul-de-sac back over there.
So, you're, are, you're coming from, so who are you representing?
The industrial development authority. The Water and Sewer Authority and the city of Trenton asked the Dade County Industrial Development Authority to help them with the construction of this because it is in the industrial park. And our splosh money is set aside for land acquisition and infrastructure. So we can use this to help them do the infrastructure in on our land.
It's all coming out of industrial development though, none out of the CDs?
Now, they, I'm sure they're going to have additional costs and the water company's going to have a lot of additional cost.
But you're talking about, the amount you're giving is just industrial.
Just to get, basically from the bottom of the hill to the, to the bottom of the hill, the sewer and the water for Trenton Pressing.
We were going to take some of the permit money that they give and put back towards this as well, but this wasn't an infrastructure for city splosh at all. We got another sewer project we're trying to do and nearly another one point two million dollar input that we're doing. This was not for us to put in.
And you're speaking as the mayor of Trenton, okay.
On that section, that's why I went to the industrial, the commission asked me to go to the industrial, the I D A to ask, use their splosh to do this, but we're engineering and doing it to meet our expectations. Now, the company's building all the way across the road to hit the manhole, but the main infrastructure line, we felt should be put in by I D A's.
And have they given, did they give you any reasons why they can't do it themselves?
Well, this, this is, which one can't do it, I'm sorry.
The, exactly, my point.
Yeah.
The water authority.
Well, we're just assisting on their, on their match, they just requested it.
And they didn't give you any backing behind that?
Well, other than the fact that they're going to be looking for splosh money too, to be able to help their, I mean, they've got half, one point two million, so they're going to be looking for a half a million dollars, six hundred thousand. So they just came to us to ask us if we would, or the I D A, the board, if they would help, uh, help them with a matching part of theirs to be able to put the water in going up the hill.
Well, that's the reason, and for my question is when Don shows us the worksheet on splosh, where that money came?
Yeah, we've got right now set aside eight hundred and fifty thousand, the hundred and twenty would come off of that. Yeah, from the industrial, so it would reduce what we have available to buy.
It reduces your line, your line on, on the worksheet.
Right.
Theirs, theirs will reduce as they come and ask for it.
Exactly, and they, they haven't come to ask for anything as of yet. And they just came to us last month because we're trying to get this done in a reasonable amount of time because Trenton Pressing is going up with their building. And they want to, we went, go, go ahead and get their infrastructure in where they'll have it. So eventually, it may ta, I don't know, Ms. Chairman, you may know how long it's going to take.
Project, probably the time they get everything, you know, laid out and all that, you know, six to nine months, maybe, I'd, I'd say it'd be a year, you know.
But it's all eight-inch line, is that correct?
That's what I believe it is, yeah.
The smaller portion is through the industrial park. The longer piece will be when they get to two ninety-nine to upgrade that from.
Because all those service stations up there, the hydrants, on two ninety-nine, you can put your hand over them when they open, you can stop the flow, they don't, you got a four-inch line service and a six-inch, and the water's just not there, you know.
You said the water company got a grant?
Yeah, they, they got approved for a federal grant of one point two million, I believe, was the total amount. That's also, that's through the industrial park and Highway two ninety-nine, it was a two-part grant that they put together. And they got to approve for that. It's a fifty-fifty match. They just came to the industrial development authority asking because this water line is going to be going up past this new industrial site that Trenton Pressing's put in, that, that they would, the industrial development authority be okay to use some of their splosh to be able to help them offset their fifty percent match, to get water to the top of the hill to them. And they said, they voted for a hundred and twenty thousand for me to come and ask for that off of the eight fifty. Seventy-five would go to the. Seventy-five would go to the city. Now, I'm sure the mayor's gonna have more expenses than just seventy-five, and the water's gonna have a lot more than that, other, other than the forty-five. But that's what, that's what the I D A wanted to be able to, said, okay, we'll use that, take it off our splash.
As your contrib.
As, as our contribution, because it's primarily in the industrial park.
Is there any problems now, other than on that space that they're talking about replacing?
Well, in the industrial park, it's all new, cause there's not a water line, there's no, there's no eight-inch lines through the industrial park from that point at the bottom of the hill by root curbs, it goes up to that new road over to the cul-de-sac, and then around to Vanguard. There was never any water put in there. That was a new road from Vanguard was built. So, but the Water Authority, the reason they wrote this grant, and I don't wanna speak off key, cause I, but from what I've been told, where they can get redundant backup, not only does it give an eight-inch water line through the industrial park, that we don't have any water there now, but it also gives redundant backup to the north end of the county.
Don, that, um, if they pull a hundred-and-twenty thousand, I know they said they got it set aside, but that's not real money in a pot over here, you know, but, uh, we got, I know we got the money, but is that, uh, how much have they pulled out so far?
So they've already pulled out three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the land purchase, that's what we've had so far. And, um, I mean, a hundred-and-twenty, just saying, a hundred-and-twenty?
Yeah.
I mean, we've got it.
Yeah.
I, I mean, we've got it in the account, and we've got it in the accounting. Again, if we don't have any storms in four years, we're good to go.
So let's spread this back out again from my mind. They got a one-point-two-million-dollar grant at a fifty-fifty match, correct?
Yes.
All right, so you're gonna take forty-five thousand and that give back to the water company, seventy-five to the C D. But the water.
The C D is for sewer, and the forty-five is for the water.
Okay, so we're gonna give about?
And, and, uh, Mr. Commissioner, basically how that came about, the forty-five, if you wanna, it was gonna be the original without the grant, it was gonna cost a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to get the water to the top of the hill.
For them?
For them, for them, for Trenton Industrial, uh, for the Trenton Pressing. So now they have the grant, so half of that's ninety. So the I D A is basically gonna give half of that match for just that part. That's where the forty-five count, thousand came in.
I still don't understand how that benefits, um, I mean, I just, I, I just, I don't understand how that benefits the I D A or us, or?
Well, for the I D A standpoint, it's providing water for the industrial, uh, park.
But they have water.
No, they do not. They don't, there's no water, I apologize. They have a one-inch line that was put in where they could do the construction of their building at the top of the hill, but that road has never had water.
So let me, can I, can I address that one?
Do they need water if they've never had water?
But they're building a ten-million-dollar building. When you plant, when you grow, they're gonna, have you not been by there and looked at the building?
I have, but I mean.
There's no water there, yeah.
Well, they're all the players, I D A and the water company, and, and, or all, and us, we're all the players in the business coming in.
Now, this does not give, this is not putting anything on their land, they've actually come, I'm sorry.
You would, I, I don't know, I just, I just assumed that, you know, you would know that the water's there and the water's good before you put up a building, but I'm, I, I'm obviously really confused.
Well, it's no more than if you build a home and you come to the water company and say, I built a new home, I want water, and they're gonna have to run from the sword.
You go get water before you build your home.
And you know, well, you know you've got access to it.
Yeah, you know.
And, and that's where the hundred.
I'm just confused.
Now, that's where the hundred-and-eighty thousand come in. We already knew what it was gonna cost to get water to Trenton Pressing beforehand.
And whose job is to get that water there, I guess?
It would be the water companies, it would be the I D As, and it would be working with the, uh, with the company.
But isn't that already thought of in the beginning?
It was. We didn't know we were gonna get the grant. We just came up with the amount of forty-five thousand.
And so you would have.
To help them, because they did get the grant.
I know, but before, forget about this grant. So, for those, for them to get water, what was the path?
Uh, we would have been coming to use part of the splash to be able to help them get water, the Water Authority and.
How much is that?
The total cost was gonna be a hundred-and-eighty thousand. That's what the water company gave us months ago.
And who pays that?
It would come from the Water Authority and the I D A.
Out of splash.
Out of splash.
And that's not counting the sewer.
Right.
That sewer's another thing.
And this is an incentive for that company to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, obviously, the, the ten-million-dollar investment, and, I mean, you have to go back to the beginning when we first, when we first got them to stay. They were leaving. I mean, they, they were leaving. If we hadn't have gave them this property and set them up to be able to do that.
And I don't mean any disrespect at all, but I, I feel like this is an afterfact of some, some sorts, because this is the first time I'm ever hearing about it, and it's kinda frustrating to me, because, um, I don't know, not unless it was, would be presented to me at a different time, I don't know, so I feel.
I, I'm not sure. I mean, the, I mean, the chairman's been, he's been with us the whole time. I mean, I, I, the I D A, we, we meet with him all the time to let him know the, the process is going on.
When they built Vanguard, there wasn't water there, but, you know, at all. But, uh, they did get some grants, use some splash, and they brought it off of Highway eleven and bored the, bored the railroad and brought it in Vanguard, you know, because we knew that water, that access was there.
Yeah, but I don't under, I mean, I guess I don't understand if you were already, if it was already a plan, you're gonna pay for it, then what are you asking us for?
I think probably if they hadn't have got the grant, we'd be asking for a lot more.
Yeah, for the full amount.
I mean, you know, we would be asking for a lot more if they hadn't have got the grant. And the grant does more than just give water to the industrial park.
After the fact that there's a building there. I mean, I, I just don't understand that. I just, I don't.
No, that's what the whole, the eight-hundred thousand, actually it was a million dollars at first, set aside for the I D A.
One point, one point two, yeah.
And, uh, that's what that's for, it's to show, to, uh, for improvement, you know, whether it's water, sewer, or whether it's to help bring a business in to, uh, improve, um, the property, you know. So you know that, you know, and what, what they did, you know, just like with Vanguard, when they built it, they knew they had that right there, that hundred, you got whatever, eight-hundred thousand now, and you know you got that money, but then as soon as you find out that that's the goal in that building, they're gonna do it, then you go, you start looking for grants to try to keep them from coming, or, boy, we did, keep them from coming, and asking for, you know, the full amount, which would be two-hundred thousand dollars, you might say, just for that business. So, right now, you know, he's asking for one-twenty to put with, that's sewer and water, you know, to get there, although, you know, I mean, but that's what that money was set aside for, by the, by the splash money, was to make sure that that, that they had that money, you know, and that, and because, you know, that, you know, that's, uh, that's, that's part of, 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 you know, if there's water down there, you wouldn't have to worry about it at all. But we knew that there was gonna, there's, there was a tap, you know, if we had to run it a hundred miles, it's different, but there was a tap there on the bo, at the bottom of the hill, and we knew there was gonna be a cost to, to get it up there. And I knew they got, they had the money. I mean, he could come, we could change him if we, you know, he could come in here and ask us for a hundred-and-eighty, whatever it was, right now, or, or next week and request that instead of the one-twenty. But, but, but asking for one-twenty, that's how they're working together with the city and the Water Authority, you know, with, to get it done, you know. I mean, I say what you're coming, that's what I'm taking.
Yeah, I just didn't understand how that works. I just, uh.
So really, here's my question for me to keep in my mind, is you're asking for a hundred-and-twenty thousand for this project just for the water line in the industrial park?
Well, the sewer line, the sewer and the water line in the industrial park, yes.
And forty of that goes to?
What is the timeframe on that second, that second project?
That would be totally up to the water company.
Cause they got a feeling we're gonna have another six hundred thousand.
Now, I don't know how they're gonna come up with their, and, uh, Mr. Chairman may know, you know, how they're gonna come up with the matching of the whole grant that they got approved for. But that would be up to, that'll be up to them, whether they go and get, borrow money, or ask for splash. I, I don't, I don't know anything about how much money they have in the splash at all.
Right.
All I know is what we have. They had asked us to help, and that's what they came up with, for me to come and ask y'all if we could use the hundred-and-twenty off of the eight-fifty.
So.
You know, so, you know, if, if, the I D A board could have said no, but that wouldn't have been, that wouldn't have been right either, because it's bringing industri, I mean, it's, it's bringing water past the road that we've got now that we've got new industry on.
And sewer.
And sewer, yes.
Cause they, it's not just their sewer, it'd be able to tap if something came in, they would be there to tap, you know, so.
Right, and, and as far as the rest of it, Commissioner, I have no idea how they're going, how they were funding their side of the entire grant when they, when they submitted it.
Okay, and tell me one more time, the one-twenty and then the forty is going to the city?
Probably go to the Water Authority, and, or to purchase equipment, ever how they want us to do it, through the, uh, through Don. And seventy-five will either go directly to the city, or we'll pay for some of the piping and, you know, uh, seventy-five will go to the, whatever it's gonna cost the city to put in the sewer.
So is that seventy-five for the water, or?
No, seventy-five for the sewer, forty-five for the water.
So the forty-five is gonna go to them, you're saying, for whatever they want? And then the seventy-five is gonna?
Go to the sewer, yes.
Go to the sewer for the city?
For the city sewer system.
Okay.
In the industrial park, that's just, you know, to get the, to get the new business.
So could it, could we not just make sure that the city has what, what they need and not give the Water Authority that forty-five? Or give the city what they need?
Well, I mean, all I can say is, they came and asked the I D A if they would contribute, and they said, yes, we will, here's the amount, and that's when I'm coming tonight to ask for the hundred-and-twenty.
It's not a debate. It's not a debate. It's a hundred-and-twenty zip.
Right, and you know, it's just hundred-and-twenty total, seventy-five for the sewer, and twenty, or forty-five for the, uh, for the water, for that portion, um.
Highland's horse.
Highland what? What was?
Highland industrial.
Highland industrial way, I think.
What that would cost?
Yes, we, we had engineer drawings done of the sewer, cause it has to have five drops to get down to our current sewer line, which is at the bottom of the hill next to the creek, which comes from the old shop building, it runs to our sewer plant. So we use lad engineering out of four paint, and the water company does as well. So there's two different engineers that work this together. So once we got that, and we bid it to a lot of the local contractors, uh, Heartline Excavation, Mike Lawson, and some other ones, Heartline gave us, gave us back the price. Uh, there's a lot of limestone down there, so we had to have blasting. There's thirty-five thousand of that seventy-five is estimated, if they blast every foot, four-hundred-and-ninety-three foot. Uh, so we have to figure on the high side. So we worked ahead with our engineers and these contractors to come up with that price. But the city felt that it wasn't our expansion, it's industrial developments expansion of sewer. We only get two-point-something million for seven years, we got other projects we gotta do with it, along with that one-point-something million inside the plant we're trying to work on, which we got partially a, our, we're using the city's art funding for that.
Okay.
So, um, we just didn't feel that it was our expansion to be done, it was industrial developments expansion of the sewer line. Now, the company is paying a big section to get across their property, across Highlands Drive, to hit the manhole on the east side of the road, which is going off the hill, again. So there was a little bit more, because you got the deep manholes, and you gotta put it to grade, stuff to do, and that's what the engineers told us, and, so.
Okay.
We just come to the I D A board and say, all right, here's the price that you asked us to give, but we feel you should be asking this for your splash, not the city's splash.
I gotcha.
Now, we have also considered, and we can confirm this Friday, like, you know, they paid a heavy permit fee for their square footage or the cost of their building facility. And we took that money, which went into our general fund, and we turned around and bought a bunch of the gravel that they were settling to put back in refuge for us. So we're thinking of using some of that money to help offset that, so it don't take as much splash funds from our taxpayers to have offset some of that seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
And we wanna discuss that, uh, at our Monday meeting coming up the second Monday, after we've seen what could happen here, but we just, we, we can't afford it out of our splash, because we're, we still got a long ways to go and a lot of other things to do.
Right, yeah, I understand.
But we've been working with the engineering group and the water company, but they worked on this way before, on this grant, even when we, when Pressing started, we started seeing what it was gonna cost. And then when it got down to it, and seeing what, how much rock they run into, we, stuff, so we kinda.
Yeah, that's understandable.
Took a while to get the pricing back, we had to be, you know, it's, everybody's busy running, took a long time to get the pricing back.
I understand.
All right, Mr. Lowery? I'm good with it. I understand, and I'm good with it.
Well, from the information I just heard, I wanna remove myself from this particular item.
Comes with the Heartline.
Because of the.
The contractor that's been on it, yes.
Could be a conflict, yeah, okay. Uh, how about you, Mr. Cowan?
Well, I'm good with it. I mean, it's just showing they're working together, they're entitled to splash, just like the fire departments were entitled to splash and the sheriff's department. And if this is what they're choosing to do, that was the reason of my question. When the worksheet's done, where does that hundred-and-twenty thousand or whatever, just not a little here, a little there, it all comes off of yours. So you're being a good neighbor and sharing your money with the water and the C D, the water company and the C D, to be able to do something to bring a ten-million-dollar expansion in our, yeah.
I'm good with it.
I have one more question, and then I'm good. Um, so the, the forty-five thousand, which you said would go by Don?
Yeah, everything would run through Don.
So it wouldn't, it, it's not necessarily to be voted on, but it would come through the office to know each item that's being purchased for this project, correct?
You know, I, we haven't discussed where we would write a check to the water company for eight-inch line or whatever, but we'll work with, uh, we'll work with Don on every, the accounting part of it. But it would come directly off of our splash.
Okay.
But the I D A is the authority making the decision, not.
Well, no, I didn't mean making a decision, but I would like.
Well, I mean, tracking the expenses even, too. We just give the check.
Yeah.
If y'all, if y'all choose to give the check.
Yeah, I, I would just like to see some accountability for that.
Oh, we have to have accountability, and I'm only assuming that the water company will have their accountability, and I know the mayor and the city will.
Yeah, I know.
So, you know, I'm only assuming the water company will too, and I'm, you know, I can't speak for them, but I, I can just about imagine they'll have to, cause it's a federal grant.
Okay, I got, I'm good.
Yeah, okay.
It took me a minute, but I, I had to get through it.
That's all right, no problem. Thank you.
You got that, Don?
I got it.
All right. Move down to six A, this is a, it's been on the agenda several times, here, fire training facility for Day County Volunteer Fire Department. All right.
Uh, last time we talked, we, uh, tabled it, and we've got to December thirty-first to make a decision. So, you know, if it needs to be tabled again, that's fine, but we did talk about the first time that we would try to look at making some cuts to get the price down, and we was able to do that. Uh, before, we was asking for a clean facility and an extra container for a burn facility, so it could be more of a public safety training center for the sheriff's office and everything. So now, to try to help out, after talking to y'all, I talked to them and got away with that one burn container, and moved the burn containers into the training facility. It may be less use for the sheriff's department after we burn. We could wash the wa, walls down, you know, after we burn, but it's still gonna have soot, and it took out some of the movable walls. I mean, it's still good for the fire departments and mountain rescue with the tower up top. Uh, but it brought it down to four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, three-hundred-and-four dollars. Uh, compared to the other, that's a difference of nineteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three. Uh, so it brought it down, I mean, nineteen thousand, I mean, it wasn't a whole lot, but I did try to, we did look at it and try to do what y'all asked, and just get what we needed in it instead of everything else, and.
So the, the bottom number line, line is what now? What is it now?
This one will be four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, three-hundred-and-four dollars. Uh, the other one we presented was four-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand and thirty-seven dollars. And that's a difference of pretty much twenty thousand, nineteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three. So there's, I mean, we can table it again, discuss, if he has any questions, they're more than welcome to get in touch with any of us, and, cause we've got to Dec, you know, we've got till December thirty-first, so we can table it till next meeting, and we'll, we'll try to.
Have y'all seen if there's any grants for what you're doing?
Yeah, just like we mentioned at the very first, it's hard. I have looked, and I've talked to grants, um, I've actually talked to them. What's hard is us being, I guess, a small county and different volunteer fire departments. Uh, we may be able to, could. Uh, we may be able to, could join in, like the air packs is one. They say it's harder that way, but training centers like this with grants, they use it more for, like, big paid departments like Atlanta, and bigger areas than just a small volunteer with seven different volunteer departments. They said it'd be real tough to get. But I, I've talked to Mr. Townsend several times about it, and, you know, I mean, every time we talk, he's on me about it too, and so I've made phone calls, and I've looked up, and, every answer I get is just difficult to do that, and that's the reason.
Okay.
So if y'all have any questions before then, if y'all, we can table it, and we'll be back next month and soon.
Dish you up, 414,304 is the bottom.
That's the, yeah, sir, yeah. And that, that won't be the clean facility, but it'll do all the fire trainings, uh, mountain rescue, we'll have the tower up top for rappelling. I mean, the sheriff's office could still use it, we'll try, after we do burns, we can wash the walls down real good, but it's not gonna get all the soot, but there's still maybe some areas that they can use, so.
Well, I just have a comment, I guess, of, um, well, I, I think it's a great, I think it would be good for, for Dade County, um, I'm not against having something like that. Um, something with that, with a station over there to cover that area would be great. But I also don't think that we need to go down and then wish that we would have done something different.
Right.
Um, and that's kinda where I'm at with, that it's a lot of money, and I don't want you to put it in, you know, like you're saying, and then wish that we had it somewhere else, and then people could use it or not use it.
Right.
And it'd rather, I'd rather us be able to, to have the full effects.
Right, and the plan I still option, it's still December, but I was just trying to do my due jillings, like I said I would, and try to help out, but-
Yeah.
Both of them still out there, the first one would be the, our first choice, because it would assist all public safety.
Right.
Well, we'll get back to next meeting, we'll see what we-
Thank you.
We'll get everything together, okay? All right. Let's move down to, uh, number seven, six, or eight, seven? We got a report tonight? See you, Cole. Okay, I didn't see you, Cole, come on in.
Start letting him go first.
Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to start with our budget status. Um, we received one concrete proposal. Um, additional pro, or proposals have been solicited from local contractors to encourage local participation in this project. Aubrey Black Construction provided a proposal that totaled $42,190. And what this includes is removal and replacement of the east and west sidewalks between street level stairs to the building stairs with stamped concrete, removal and replacement of the east sidewalk from the main building sidewalk to the memorial with stamped concrete, and replacement of the north entry stairs, which have been demoed on the north side of the building. The budget has been revised to reflect this proposal. A total of $2,826 was allocated from our contingency for the scope of work. And given the timing and what time of year it is, uh, BCM is advising that this be awarded to Aubrey Black Construction. Um, and our current contingency based on the above is now $118,558. Um, going on with our schedule, framing and drywall work is ongoing. Um, the majority of our framing work is complete. We're gonna have to try to have drywall delivered in the next couple of weeks, so we can get started on that. In-mall electrical roughing is continued. Um, we did have several meetings with our electrical contractor that greatly increased our pace, and I believe we're extremely close to having our in-mall electrical roughing completed. Um, our additional core ceiling tiles are currently being produced. I hope to have an image of some of those to share with you all shortly. Um, our exterior drain work has been completed by David Lawson Constructions. Um, our HVA senior units will be set on our new pad within the next two weeks, and our landscaping is scheduled to begin on Monday. So we're moving quick.
This coming Monday.
Yes, sir. Um, and I don't have any significant open items, but our contract status, upcoming RFPs are included in doors and hardware, cleaning and sealing, uh, the courthouse brick, and then refinishing our light bulb.
And that's, um, that's, uh, change order, is that what that, I mean, was that in? That was not included?
It should be included in the budget, yes, sir.
It was in the budget, the, the actual cleaning and sealing of that brick.
Yes, sir.
Big deal, yeah, yeah. Because it absorbs it, like, when it rains, it soaks it in, you know?
Right.
And, okay. Any questions for Cole?
The, the electrical contractor, are they holding up our other contractors? And are we getting back charged for any delay of work or anything?
I don't believe we have any back charges currently.
So do they have picked up their pace, though?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Cole.
I got some. Appreciate your time.
All right, y'all got anything you wanna add for adjournment of work session?
Where'd he go? Where'd Alex go?
Alex. I followed back now, 1-1, what'd you need on the, you don't get him in here?
Yeah.
All right, let me see if I can get him in. All right, go, yeah, go on there and get him.
I meant to tell him not to run off. I meant to add this a while ago, and I forgot. Uh, last month, we did table the AEDs for the buildings. Me and Alex have been in contact over that, and he does have a surprise in what we proposed that we think we need. Uh, my concern is not having them. More and more people today are having heart attacks. You didn't, when I was younger, you didn't have that, hear of that many people having heart attacks now? It seems like that's a more and more occurring event, so that's why I feel like we should probably install these. Like I said, Alex has got us a number, and we talked about it today, Simon, last week as well, where we wanted to put them in locations, so.
Robin, are we all right on the agenda? Can I go ahead and, uh?
Need to amend this.
Amend, I go ahead and amend it, yeah, we need to amend it, and I didn't, which I said I know I did, I forgot to remind you, yeah. We'll amend the agenda to include, um, down at the forefields, um, the actual, is he, you're getting that? It would be-
Yes, ARP.
Yeah, and they were being, never been at this, um, you know? If, the, the amount was, have you got a copy of it? I mean, the- Alex has got it, it was like 20-
20, right, 27,000 dollars, but I can't remember the number, but it's, right now is a 35 percent, um, 35 percent off.
All right, I'll go get it.
Okay.
Okay, we, um, again, the AEDs that we spoke about, we sent the latest, uh, quotes in based on the facilities, uh, the sports complex, senior building, all three storm shelters, and all of our public buildings, our shop, uh, transfer station, and all the public buildings right here, uh, we come up with 13 that's needed. Right now, those units are 2,048 dollars apiece and 80 cents. But one of the things, after myself and chief, uh, gross with EMS chief, we didn't feel we needed the extra batteries at this time, because they're like four-year batteries. If we start having issues, it'd be easier to order a battery that's up to date. And Stryker's really good and physio about getting those batteries out to us. So that's a 2,500 dollars that we don't need, 2,594. Uh, the wall signs, again, this would be put around the facilities to show where the AEDs are. Um, the wall cabinets, there's three of those, and we have talked, as Commissioner Heartline had mentioned, about the outside facility of our sports complex. Uh, the bathrooms on the north end, uh, the concession stand building, and the restrooms at the soccer football field. Now, these are being a heat and cold environment enclosures, that's why they're so high. They're 542 dollars and 75 cents apiece. And then, we don't think we need the carrying cases. These are a few, we didn't have them in the, uh, boxes, and we've got some of the boxes at the buildings that here that we had, and I think that number can come down on the carrying cases are probably completely off. Uh, and that's the, what we feel that prices, and the commissioner, I sent, I didn't print that one that I sent you, I apologize, I got the original one. And, uh, so that's what we feel. Now, you know, there's gonna be some things needed as the court, the historical courthouse, uh, moves, and the other facilities as they come on, but what we like about these CR twos, it's not the same thing that we use out in emergency services, but it can be expanded to our public wifi, which is at our sports complex, it's at every building. If it is moved or turned on, it can alert us in 911, and it also can alert anybody within EMS what it is. And it's built by physio control, which is the same systems that most of the ambulance services use, and that we mostly have. And then, say something like that happens, whenever it happens, and they come, they unplug and replug to the other physio control, give them another set of pads, and that AED's back in service immediately. So, you know, we are, we do have, um, you know, we, we talked about possibly them things being stolen or tampered. These boxes also have an alarm that will go off and let us know if somebody pulls the, uh, the, uh, alarm, um, door to get into the AED. Because we do see some of that stuff at our parks, both the city and county parks do see some things that happen, and, uh, we do have cameras, but sometimes it's hard to catch them in the nights and the things, so, you know, we just, hopefully that our good citizens and people make sure that it's there, but it, you know.
Do they have a, Rick, um, since it's wifi, I don't know, do they have a tracker on? Do we track them, we find?
I don't know if we do, it, it uses our wifi.
Okay.
The, the system cuts to it, it does a self-check every day. It, and, and when we put it in, you put the, uh, uh, expiration dates of the pads, when it lets you know when it gets too old, but if somebody grabs it, turns it on, because we got wifi just expanding the, what we call the date, public wifi, like in these buildings, it's the same down there. And then we have the wifi that ties to our cameras and other things that's not open to the public.
Okay.
So it, you know, like, all of our buildings, we could monitor, and see what they're doing, and then go with them.
Total, the, the total, bottom line.
Over with the cabinets and everything.
Everything.
I didn't, I, I was gonna hurry to get here, and I left.
Yeah, I, I, let me see what I sent, uh, I apologize.
Just the AEDs were 26,634.
So, yes, if we add that, 26,634, the signs and the wall cabinets, that's what we need right now.
What does that mean?
Oh, that, that is with the- No, that's only, you said there's 13?
Yes, sir.
At 2048, that's just for the AEDs.
And it's not counting the wall cabinets?
And this is coming out of?
Hey, oh.
Right at 28,693. That's the three things we need, yeah, we don't need the carrying cases. Some, most of the buildings I went to, the older AEDs that are expired, like this one here, the pads are expired, and we were trying to check on the pads, find them. Some of our current ones are just older, it's hard to get. And so, we would get the life packs, the signage, and the wall cab, the three wall cabinets for the, uh, sports complex. It'll be, we, and we'll try to position them out of the weather as much as possible, like, one of the entrances, I think there's a little cubby in one of them, and make them as easy that they can be seen and by the public, and, you know, the octagon, I call it the main building, the concession, we just wanna make sure we've got enough signage. And if we feel we need other smaller cabinets, there's probably, we got other cabinets that we could get basic cabinets inside these buildings.
So it's thir-, how many did you say?
13 life packs, which is at 2,048 dollars and 80 cents apiece.
From Stryker?
Yeah, from Stryker, which is 26,634,40. 13 wall signs for 430 dollars and 95 cents. And then the three external heat, uh, cool alarm boxes for 16,28, 25. It's 28,693 dollars and 60 cents.
Email her, I don't have a problem.
I can get this.
We haven't seen that, so just email.
I'm, I'm sorry, yes, it come back kinda late, and we, it wasn't on the agenda, we weren't sure if it was gonna get put on, nothing.
What about you, Mr. Heartline?
I'm good with it.
What? Mr. Cow?
I'm good, this is ARP money and-
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, put that on consent agenda. Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll adjourn our work session, and we'll-
Thank you.
Work, talk, break, and we'll come back, sure, you know, you got anything you wanna-
Just go in the store.
You don't think, you, you think, you feel, if I need to get up, I'll be- That's good, that's fine. All right, well, let's go. We'll, uh-
This has been a long one.
I know, I know, I know, it's pretty long. All right, we'll go ahead and call our regular meeting here of the first, or the second day of, uh, uh, October, November. The year's gone by real quick on us, and, uh, appreciate everyone staying with us here through the meeting. Uh, as always, before we start our regular meeting, ask Mr. Goff here if he would lead us in prayer, and also pledge allegiance. Everyone stand please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity tonight to be where we are and be in a country as safe as ours. We look at the world, and we see all that's going on, and we just praise you, Lord, for our little part of this world that we live in, and we thank you for the people that are here, not only here tonight, but in our community, those who are listening. And, Father, we just thank you for, uh, the government that we have in our community, in our city, in our county, for all of those who work and protect us every day. And, Lord, we talk about things here tonight, so much of it has to do with the safety and the well-being and the quality of life for the people of Dade County and those who may visit here. So, Father, we just thank you for such a great opportunity, but we ask you, Lord, to bless, uh, our nation and bless this world. Father, we pray that you would just continue to lead us tonight as we conduct the business of this county, that everything we do, Lord, would be pleasing in your sight, and as pleasing as we can make it, uh, and as many people as we can in this county. We give you the praise for it in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners. It takes place at the same time on first Thursday of every month. Proper notice, this meeting was given to our legal org in the Dade County Sentinel, and has been posted in our hallway and of administrative building. This time I do need a roll call, Mr. Lowery?
Here.
Heartline?
Here.
Mr. Goff?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
And Sherrod. And Ms. President. Mr. Lowery, you wanna start with your, uh, report, your, your, your report, please?
Citizen participation first.
Yeah, citizen participation.
All right, yeah. All right, we got, we got anyone who wants to call to us now? We, we've, uh, opened it up for five minutes, your time?
Yeah, I'd like to say a little something. Appreciate your time, and, uh, my name's Sean Anderson, for anybody that don't know me. Afraid my name's been in the newspaper here the last couple of weeks, and probably will be again over the next few weeks, but, uh, I, I do wanna present something here tonight, and in the interest of everybody's time and the five minutes, then I'm just gonna read from what I've typed up to present you with tonight. And it's kinda, it's kinda just speaking, not just to y'all, but the citizens as well. But, uh, before I get started, I know three of y'all were copying on an email recently, and you've got a list of some questions and stuff that was in that email, so if you were, if you hear some of that and hear in this letter, then you can revert back to that email as well and see that. I know y'all have had some challenging discussions already here tonight, but one thing I would like to add real quick is, uh, the presentation that Evan made with the IDA, I, I am curious of, how much money did the IDA pay the county back for the manpower and the equipment that was used from the IDA? When you was talking about the funds and stuff a while ago, I, that just came to my mind, and, and I was curious about that.
At present time, they have any voices for anything except for the padlock on the gate.
Just curious. Uh, I'll go ahead and get started, and I'll read this real quick, so I don't run over my time. But, I lived in a very bad part of New Jersey for a little while. It was an area called Camden, New Jersey, and at the time, some people referred to it as the armpit of the United States. Not everyone was like this, but for a lot of the population there, people seemed to just be in a sour mood all the time. I seen people talk to their loved ones in general conversation in a manner that would probably get you arrested around here. Trust me when I tell you, I didn't fit in. While I was there, we had to park in a gated supervised parking lot, walk across busy traffic, and through two refineries just to get to the school that I was in. If you drove 10 miles in any direction, you could expect a 30-minute drive on a good day. Everywhere you looked, there were large businesses and industries that had pushed people out of what was once a beautiful place. When I got home, I realized that there was really no place like Dade County. After traveling to many parts of the country, I still believe that. We have mountains, we have valleys, we have fields, we have walking trails, and for the most part of the county, we have peace. And for the most part, we still have four different seasons, And for the most part, we still have four different seasons, although sometimes they tend to confuse us here in the south. People have come to Dade County to remove themselves from areas that are fast approaching similarity to the one that I just described. However, if we're not careful, we're gonna find ourselves on a fast track to demoralize in our beautiful town if we continue to disrupt our citizens' quality of life. The IDA board has chosen to begin integration of industry into and around established homes without any means of conversation with the citizens that will be affected. After doing some research, we found that not only will these actions have a negative impact on citizens' quality of life, our financial investments will most likely result in a negative impact as well. Now, these are research that we done as homeowners, not that the IDA board has done. The board was approached with the fact that this type of integration requires a lot more due diligence and research than bringing industry into a location already established for industry. The board was also approached with nine questions, eight of which was yes or no type questions, all relating to the studies that should be performed before implementing these actions. Some of these questions were presented months ago. The board has chosen not to address these questions regarding, have you done this research? None of those have been addressed. I'm not here to degrade industry, as I believe there is a need for industry, as long as it's kept within the current or correct balance of the county's needs and the desires of the taxpayers. I am, however, totally against the county taking actions that will have a negative impact to our citizens. We were instructed to reach out to board members as individuals and have one-on-one conversations with them, that they were all good people and would be willing to sit down and listen. We were able to approach a few, but during this time, the board chair instructed the members that it would be best that they did not meet with any citizens to discuss concerns. The board's meetings are held at ten-thirty in the afternoon, which would require a lot of concerned citizens to take personal leave from their jobs in order to attend a meeting. This timeframe has also been questioned to change with no response from the board. During the board meetings, there is a desire to limit the time a citizen is allowed to speak, therefore giving the appearance of suppressing the citizens from speaking any concerns or questions fully. I've been told by members of this commission that the county has no governance over the actions of this board, and I understand that. Nor do we have an oversight plan of any kind that can show current studies, current needs, or past successes or failures of this board's actions. We have allowed this board to operate in such a way that there appears to be no accountability to the citizens in which they're entrusted to serve. Even though this commission does not have authority over the actions of this board, you do fill a chair that has the power of influence. And I'm asking each one of you tonight if you will be willing to do everything in your power to help protect the quality of life and financial investments of this county's citizens, ensuring that the right amount of due diligence is performed and much transparency is created between the IDA's actions and the citizens of whom they choose to impact, not just for the present concerns, but for future concerns as well. And I ask this because members of this commission have told me what kind of situation many of you came into when you took these positions and how much work it took to overturn and correct actions from previous commissions. If you take these steps now so that in ten years from now, when someone else is sitting in your seat or in your chair, they'll be able to pick up where you left off taking pride in the actions that you took today. And then in closing, I'd like to close with, with three statements. One of them is, is the mission statement for the Northwest Georgia Board of Commissioners. And that mission statement is to improve quality of, quality of life for every Northwest Georgia resident, every Northwest Georgia resident through orderly growth, conservation of the region's natural and historic resources, and care and development of the region's human resources. These next two statements were made by the IDA chairperson in his candidacy letter for the District Three Commissioner spot. Assurance of public understanding of the support for the choices and decisions required to sustain county governance. I will act with honesty, integrity, impartiality, with due diligence, and with the independence of any outside pressure in the discharge of my statutory functions. I support and will provide a system of local government services designed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Dade County citizens. Those two statements were made by the IDA chairperson who's running for Mr. Golf's position next year. Both that was acted in opposition to during the purchase of the recent IDA property on Highway eleven and maybe soon to come to near some of your property in the future. The other one, like I said, was the mission statement for the Northwest Georgia Commissioners. Uh, I'd like to leave with one, one other thing and I apologize if I went over five minutes.
I'm looking your.
But the definition of integrity is when your actions match your beliefs. And I've been told by several people on this commission and the Board of Commissioners that they would not want this happening to them or integrating industry around their own properties. However, their actions show, excuse me, their actions show different. These guys that sitting around here and spoke tonight already, that's wearing the fire department shirts and myself, we have seen probably more death and destruction in this county than anybody should ever have to see. But the only thing that allows us to sleep good at nighttime is that we know that we go out with full integrity and do everything we can to fulfill the commitment that we made to serve the citizens of this county. So I'm asking this Board of Commissioners tonight, if you'd be willing to use your influence or any means that you have possible to ensure that the IDA is operating in the best interest of its citizens, not just for financial purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Anderson?
I got one.
Alright.
Yep.
There's no disrespect in what I'm gonna ask. When you added on your garage at your house, did you ask anybody to do that?
Did I ask anybody to do it?
Did you get permission?
No.
Now, I'm not being, I'm, I'm gonna lean up to something. You didn't, right? Would you like to see zoning put on the next ballot to let the citizens of the county vote to whether they do or do not want zoning? Cause in my opinion, nobody wants zoning until it's in their back door. And I agree, cause I live on a farm. If somebody come by next door to me and built a multi-unit apartment complex, I would be upset.
Or put a Vanguard industry next to it.
Put a Vanguard in it. But at this point, we do not have zoning. So my question to you, because you didn't ask anybody that you built this building and a building permit or anything for your shop, would you be willing to want it to put on the next ballot to let the citizens vote to whether they do or do not want zoning?
Alright, so this is my, I was asked this just, just not too long ago. I'm a firm believer in transparency.
Okay.
And I'm a firm believer in communication and how we communicate. When you put something on the ballot that says zoning, it immediately puts a bad taste in a lot of people's mouth.
I agree.
Okay? If you're transparent enough in what exactly zoning means and how you define it for the individuals and show that it can benefit somebody, I believe your outcome or outpouring that you get from a lot of citizens would vastly be different.
That's true. There's no doubt, that or land like you say one, but not just to benefit somebody, benefit the whole county. That's what you, that's what we have to look at, you know? And, and it's been, it's been brought up for years, you know, and I know, I know where you're getting at.
I understand where you're coming from.
I'd like to let Robin ask, I'm gonna put you on the spot, Rob. A legal question about zoning. My understanding that this board already has the authority to induce zoning if they so choose. And you can't be put on the ballot for people to vote on. It's a power we already have.
I agree.
Yep. So zoning, yeah, I mean, you, you gotta, it's, it's, every time, and I'll just be honest with you, use a zoning to somebody and they're not for it until something like happens to happen to you, cause we, we just got through with the a year or so ago.
Well, I'm not gonna deny that I have kept my head in the sand and probably kept to myself a little bit more than I should have over the years and stayed out of actions of the county politics and stuff like that. I won't deny that. And I hope that the citizens that are listening here tonight see this, that's actions that are taking place and they pull their head, head out of the sand too and make preparations to make sure that this don't happen to them in the future.
You know?
But what I'm also getting at is this board is about to cause a financial loss to at least five, six citizens. And they have the ability to turn around and their lack of due diligence going into this. Now Ted, or Philip, you was the general contractor and you built the home that I live in.
I did.
What's, what's within two inches under the soil?
It's rock.
How much rock?
That's a bunch of it.
A lot of it. Tracy Blevins, who's also gonna be affected by this, attempted to put, put in an in-ground pool. As soon as they come out and look and started digging, they said, we can't do this. Excuse me. We can't do this. So we're gonna have to blast. And blasting in a certain radius of homes, what does it do to a structure of a home, the foundation and the footers? Alright, so there was no investigation. There was no research. And this goes back to the funds that the county is approving to allow the IDA to use. We as firefighters and EMS and your emergency services, we're required to go out and do a lot of research before we come back to this commission and ask for funds to, out of our splotch budget. And I agree with that. I agree. I, I agree that there should be a great amount of due diligence performed before we start spending other people's money. And when I say other people, I mean the taxpayers. I mean the, the widow that's sitting in there paying taxes off of a social security check. That's her money that we're spending. So yeah, there should be a lot of due diligence performed before we go spend that money. But in cases like this, there was eight questions and y'all have them on email. And I've got them here with me if anyone wants to see them after the meeting. But there was eight questions asked of that board regarding certain studies that should have been done before the purchase of the property, be- before spending that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the county funds. To my knowledge, now they refused to answer me yes or no on those, uh, on those questions. But to my knowledge, none of those studies or research was done. They spent the money not knowing the information about the blasting of the rock. They spent the money not having a definitive plan to run sewer down there. They spent the money without any of the curtain board members walking down the property. So in, in, in appearance, okay, I'm not gonna say this for sure, but in appearance, they acted in opposition to what they would do in their own personal finances. And if we serve, any of us that are servants to this county can't serve the county in an action that we would be willing to serve ourselves and our own family, then we're not doing the citizens of this county any justice at all. Any other questions?
But the actual, you know, the board itself and, you know, when it was like when he came tonight and asked us, you know, we appointed a board and, and we feel that we've got, you know, a, a good board. I mean, as far as, you know, they're gonna be fair with whatever property they buy. It's like that down there. I mean, it could be, it could be a point to a point now where we would have no say-so, they wouldn't or you wouldn't of anything with that. It could be a housing development with two hundred and fifty houses or it could have been, you know, like I said before, chicken plant or whatever, but with them owning the land and I first ever want them to be, they're not gonna put anything in it without a buffer or whatever, you know, and I know you're gonna, gonna go back to the blasting, you know? But, uh, that blasting I did over there, you know, with the plant surprised me of how nonviolent it was because I've, I've actually had license. I blasted myself and they, they did go and they did the seismic and all. And from what I understand, you know, Evan, is it, was there any, I don't, I, I need to talk to him, but was there any, um, claims filed, you know, because that back of that building there, if they did, you know, that was some heavy shots.
To my understanding, the company secured the, uh, the, and, and Commissioner Art, uh, may be able to answer this. Whoever does the blasting has to be bonded and insured.
Well, they do.
Any type of damage and they do it by whatever respects that they have to do it by.
But that's still beside the point of messing a person's house up. I mean, yeah, they could fix it, but.
So let me go back to what you said a little bit. And you're right. I mean, if, if the IDA didn't purchase the property, then someone else could have come in there and done something. And you're right by bringing that up, but my reply to that is it didn't happen. That, that's the only true fact that we have here is that didn't happen.
Well, I do.
You're gonna say that it almost did. But it didn't happen. So now the county's purchased the property and these are actions that the county has taken against its citizens with a lack of due diligence.
Um, cause that, the, the pro, the price they gave for that property, you know, I mean, it's been sold forever, but that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there's no doubt that property is worth that. I mean.
I'm not saying it's not.
No doubt, you know, so that would be.
But I mean, you can bring up any topic, any topic that you want and I can what if it today.
Alright, so what about, what about this then? Cause and like I said, another, and that's what I'm asking, cause mine's more about the zoning aspect, cause this problem's not gonna be fixed until we do have zoning. I think it's a two-year process. I don't think it's tomorrow. I think it needs a lot of discussion to go into it, but what's west of your property?
Interstate.
What's east of your property?
Highway eleven.
What's south of your property? Industrial, businesses, stuff. So now you're telling us when we look at a property without zoning, we're supposed to just look to one side of the property and say, we can only do what's here.
No.
I'm not believing in your house. Cause I understand, I would be mad too.
I'm asking, I'm asking somebody to act in their own convictions and beliefs. If a man tells me that they don't want something.
Which side of the property am I supposed to look at? You got an interstate here, you got a highway eleven, which is state right here and businesses to the south. You're asking me to look to one side of the property for you?
No, I'm talking about the future. I'm talking about this.
And that's.
This and the future as well. I mean, if you think this is bad.
No, the future is zoning, cause it's gonna get bad if we don't do it.
In on Highway two ninety-nine. And you'll have a lot of people questioning the same thing. Whether it takes zoning or whether it takes someone to say, hey, this is not something that I would want for myself, so I'm gonna act on my own convictions and beliefs. We have an industrial park. We have the ability to help improve what's there. We don't have to put another industrial park around people's homes that's already established and potentially degrade their home values. Now, I've asked for research to be done. I've asked the board to perform studies and come back and show us to say, hey, you can prevent my home from losing value if I choose to sell. I've asked for those studies.
Now, clarify this. When you say board, which board?
The IDA.
And also me, you know, I am more, but not, when I went, when I, and this is a slice for you, so. The regional commission and they will come up and do a, an impact study, but first thing they ask me, well, what, what kind of industry is going on in the property? I said, that's not what we're asking. We want, and we want you to give us an opinion on the purchase of the property, where it's at. You know, but, but they won't, they don't, they can do that kinda, you know, they've got a, they wanna know if, okay, for what kind of business is it a, an iron business? Is it a sawmill? What is it, you know? And so, but I'm working on it and they will, they'll give us an opinion.
When you do.
And that's what they do. They got people, that's all they do. They go around from all over the.
When you do the right amount of studies and the right amount of due diligence, then before you go into that project, you'll already have an idea. You'll already have an idea of what you can and can't accept in that area. And if somebody can come back and show us where, that, that this board has done their due diligence and they say, hey, you know, we've done these studies with the intent of protecting our citizens and coming to an agreement so that our citizens are protected from financial loss or quality of life and we're still gonna benefit the county, that, that's, those are the studies we need to have. But, but they wasn't done, you know? And, and that was one of the questions that we had, one of the several questions that we'd ask them. Those studies wasn't done. We went out, we spent county funds without doing that due diligence. Does that make sense? That's what I'm getting at. We don't want that from, from anybody. Any of the boards that you have oversight over, whether it be the fire departments, library, or education or anything, you expect those boards to fully research and do their due diligence before they come to you and ask for finances. That's what we're asking from this IDA board. Go do your homework. Come back and show the citizens that your plan is to protect them at the same time of trying to benefit the county. And if they can't do that, excuse me, if they can't do that, then back out of it.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Anybody, any other questions? We'll move on. But I will keep you in, up to date on what I'm working on here with the region. And that's what they do. They, they'll come out, especially if it's any major industry, they will do an impact. That's what they call an impact study. And now they've got a team that comes in and that, they're, they're not, they're nonpartial to anybody. I mean, like when the big plant down, Budweiser was built down there. They spent months doing research on that. Of course, they knew what was coming in. So I'll, I'll keep you up on all of you.
Keep me up on it. I'm not gonna be, it's just like the emails I sent back to the IDA. I'm not gonna be. Keep me up on it, I'm not gonna be, it's just like the email that I sent back to the IDA, I'm not gonna be the person that brings out an issue and don't wanna be part of the solution.
Yeah.
I will offer my help to anybody in this county that needs it, and most people know that, and I sent that email to them, offering my assistance, I'll help them do any of the research, they can come to my house, I'll walk the property with them, with no response.
Yeah. Can I ask one more question, and then I'm done? If they had, I mean, and this is for future, if they had have done all the studies and all the answers would have been that it wasn't gonna impact or anything, would your feelings or opinions, what may or may not go in there change?
Well, it just completely depends on what the answers to those.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, if all the answers come back and say that it.
I can't answer to something that I don't know. And if you go out and you do the studies, you come back and you present it to me, and you're being transparent, that gives us something to sit down and discuss about, right? But if it's not there, you can't discuss it.
Yeah. Appreciate y'all being here, thank you, Sean. Alright, uh, anybody else wanna come up, got anything on, on the map, on the top? Okay, if not, we'll move down to Mr. Lowry.
I'm gonna give us here.
Okay, I'll give the, uh, nine-one-one activity report. We had one hundred and eighty-five EMS calls. We had two hundred and seventy-five fire department, and this includes a lot of first responders and and I, I pointed this out last week, I think, but it's always, we always have more. I hope I don't click this and re- remove it out of my way now, there you go. Well, we always have more first responder calls than we do even, even EMS calls. So when you, you see us pitching for this money for these fire departments and stuff, just like the license, safety packs, the just for a, a good purpose and tax money well spent as far as I'm concerned, but two hundred and seventy-five EMS to- total calls, no, fire department calls, twenty-seven hundred and twenty-seven law enforcement. It's up a good bit this month for some reason, but for a total of thirty-one, uh, thirty-one hundred and eighty-seven calls, we had fifteen new E nine-one-one addresses for the month of October. And for a total of a hundred and fourteen new E nine-one-one addresses for the year. Now, my next thing I got is really big, what's Barney saying, Ted? It's big, it's big, it's big for the people in Creek Road, old, old Poe Creek Road, Birmingham, old Birmingham Road and Steel Road. We haven't had internet ever. And it's been a long time coming. And I talked to Austin Adam today, this morning, he gave me a good update. November the twenty-ninth, they'll actually be setting the equipment, the cables all run to that, to that area. They'll actually be setting the equipment on the twenty-ninth, and they'll think it'll take them about a the whole month of December to do testing and, and everything, but January twenty twenty-four, we'll start filling out applications to get internet, and it'll be ready to come to your house by then. So as it gets closer, you'll get notifications in the mail, if you live in that, in the Wildwood area. And it's a big deal, because I mean, we've had nothing, we don't have cable TV, we don't have internet. So, I know, yeah, it's hard to believe that we're that close to Chattanooga, but we're on the wrong side of the railroad tracks, as I always used to say, we're on the east side of the railroad tracks. And so.
And that's just the first phase, they started there.
Yeah, that's first phase, and Murphy's Hall is a little bit behind because we had the, uh, new power lines that were being run up Sand Mountain. And they, even though everybody marks their lines pretty good, there's still a time or two where they get in, get into the lines, and so, uh, that, that's, that's really big for us, and I'm, I'm so proud to announce that, so. And on a personal note, uh, I did, I did have my scan on my pancreatic cancer, and it had reduced by fifty percent. So that's gonna allow me to have a chance for an operation that maybe will get most of it, so. I appreciate the prayers. Appreciate the prayers and keep them coming.
And also tell us about your liver, that's another good thing to say.
I had, I had a spot on my liver, and they thought recently, that it might also be cancer, and they did a biopsy, but the biopsy showed negative. But when they did the PET scan, it showed positive. So during my five, four chemo treatments before the, the next PET scan, it didn't grow or shrink, so that kinda is an indicator that it's not on my liver too, so it's, that was, yeah, that was more, that was more big news, cause.
Yeah, I know you've had some sleepless nights, well, you know, the way I'm praying for you. Alright, Mr. Courtland?
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna start off with electrical inspections, um, for, for the month, we had thirty-five. And my, the one, the one I wanna look at, we had seven permanent new constructions, and then they added seven temporary new constructions. We come down, we had a charging station that Clouding Canyon put in, and also an RV park, which had seven, I'm assuming seven meters put in down there, but that just keeps, that just goes to show you that we're still getting new houses built in this county every month. As far as the sports complex goes, football has finished their season, soccer's still practicing and playing. Uh, there's some fall baseball still practicing, and now they're just doing field maintenance, and they're pruning shrubs and trees and stuff down there, getting ready for winter time. Also pay attention on Sand Mountain that they're still doing line work, they've moved locations, but there's, I'm gonna say there's fifty to seventy-five boom trucks in the county running around, so especially out there on the mountain, you really gotta watch them, cause they, they take up a lot of the road, and they're, sign people ain't the greatest.
But they're gonna be here for a while, that's why, you know, not only that, when they move, the countywide thing, so it'll be a year and a half, two-year project, so it's a, a major deal.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Call. Well, I'm glad, really glad to hear Lamar's report on his, and glad to be back, I was gone last month, so I didn't know a lot of what took place, it was tabled and whatever. But I will, uh, talk about splotch in a minute, and, uh, it's up this month again. This is for two months prior, the collection's two months ago, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, and we keep preaching that because tonight, we, uh, were asked to give about one point eight million dollars to fire departments, the sheriff's department, potentially to another fire department. And that's not all, that's not even considering the AAR, ARP money, uh, that's out there, so that's why this is so important, we talk about it. Because you wonder where would we be without this, they still need fire trucks, they still need police cars, still need a place to train, whether it's in Forsyth or where they have to go. So thanks to the people of Dade County, and if anybody's listening and you live in Michigan, and you happen to be being streamed, and you came through here and bought a hamburger and french fries, thank you for your donation to what we just did tonight, because we kept saying, a lot of money, a lot of money, a lot of money, and it takes a lot of money to run the county. Uh, and if we didn't have this, and some counties don't, if we didn't have splotch, then, uh, then we would really still need all these things.
Well, it would be, it, what he getting at is this, this money did not come from our property tax that you now pay on our property. This is paid for by McDonald's or whatever come through, passing through, that one cent you hear of, you know, that's what it adds up to. One penny off of a dollar in Dade County is what he's saying, was what, three hundred and?
Three hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Just this month, yeah.
The school got three hundred and twenty-four thousand. And the lost penny that is shared with the city of Trenton got three hundred and twenty-four thousand. So we got nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in splotch in, in that one month, when you think about the three pennies of our sales tax. The e-splotch, the splotch, and, and it's, it sometimes blows my mind to think that we generated that kind of money, it all goes for nuts lost, but the splotch goes for the things we're talking about. Things that we would have to have, they're capital expenditures, and it has to go for those. Uh, and so, thank, thank you again. Would like to say, if you look around the room, you see something's going on, this is only for the people in the city of Trenton at this time. There's one more day left tomorrow, and then Tuesday is election day, the seventh of, of, uh, November. So if you live in the city of Trenton, you have not voted, I don't know, Alex, how many people, voters, do you know that are registered roughly?
Hundred, oh, registered, I don't know.
Couple of thousand probably?
Yeah, please, yes.
Hundred and forty-three have voted as of today, out of a couple of, so if you're listening, it's, it's something you get to put your, you know, uh, Philip talked about the, and, uh, the zoning, and then Lamar's question, Lamar's question I think is one hundred percent right. But then what Philip's talking about, I think, is you put a straw poll question on a ballot, and that's put on by the Democrat Party and the Republican Party, what do you want, and that lets it come back to different groups within the county, whether it's this or the city of Trenton or whatever, they didn't have it, and that's how you get those things, so it's one or two, but the citizens don't do zoning, per se. It's comes in, in, but anyway, that's just another thing, but I'm saying, people of the city of Trenton have an opportunity to vote for, uh, two places, two people, and that is the mayor and the, uh, street commissioner, so if you haven't voted, get out. And I'll try to hush, but I do wanna throw a shout out to our girl softball team. Uh, they went to the state, they were perfect throughout the region and the super region. They did not win the state, but I think they were fifth or sixth in the state, so our hats off to them, that's good for your community, that's good for your schools, good for the morale. Uh, if our boys, we have a game tomorrow night, football, uh, playing our merchy right here in Dade County, if you've never gone to a football game, tomorrow night will be perfect, cause it's football weather for a change. Uh, if we win that for the third season in a row, unprecedented in Dade County probably, we will go to a playoff game, possibly, I'm not gonna say we are, because I don't know how things all shake down, possibly having one here in the county the following week. So we play our merchy tomorrow night for the last regular season game, and, uh, certainly I wanna win that. Uh, I, I was told that some of our cross-country had gone to state, I'm not sure of that.
They are, they are in state.
They, they, they're at now.
They, yeah, they left today.
Okay, so, you know, those are feel-good things, and it's more than a feel-good thing, it's our kids. It's that they're doing things, they're, they're, they're working hard to achieve something, and you can't tell me mama and daddy and grandma and grandpa and uncle and aunt Joe don't feel that same thing for them, it's good for our community. When our kids, we're, we're second to none in what our kids can do, so, uh, shout out to all of them, and that's all I got.
Your five minutes is that?
Eh, you're welcome.
I took part of yours.
It's alright, wherever.
Yeah, and I, I stressed along with everybody else, um, you know, get in there, uh, your community is, is very important, and the more that I sit in the seat, the more I feel it's, it's super important, and just like, I didn't understand, uh, some of the things going on, um, you know, ask questions, make sure you get to understand what, what you want. And I wish more people would, would come and be involved, because it is a crazy world out there. And your community, and the people in this community are the most important. Um, but my, my stuff is a little sh- short and sweet, so we had, uh, a total outbound of, uh, four hundred and ten, which would give us about forty-four loads. Um, I was told that there's just a lot of, um, pavement going on, pavement work, and, uh, just clearing of, of, you know, ditches and roads and, and that sort of thing. Um, I did not grab the, the recycling for this month, so I plan to have that for you guys next month.
Okay, alright. Alright, we got, uh, we had big month, I mean, it's moving, we got, uh, third of Dade County over here burning right now, I mean, it's just seemed like, you know, we gotta be so careful about this burning. Uh, you notice the smoke this morning, I'm sure, thank goodness, that, uh, it kinda lifted off of us, because it was, it was really looking bad this morning. Uh, the Egypt, um, hollow fire over there, which has been over there the last two or three days, uh, they've got that fire contained. And it was not a controlled burn, it came out, but it was not, it is, it's contained burn. Now, the one, uh, on Murphy Hall is right the opposite, you know, it's, uh, it's still going. And, uh, we need to keep an eye on that, which they are, we got a lot of people involved in that over there, Georgia Forestry, our fire departments. But the big thing is, you know, we just gotta, we, we need to watch our burning right now, because it's so dry. Um, it's really scary, uh, not only from, from that point, but if you wanna see just how much water we've got coming down Lookout Creek, go over to Sittin's Mill or where, where, um, with a pumpkin patch and sales thing, look at that right there. Lookout Creek right now, the whole volume, it's lower than I've seen it, I guess, probably in my lifetime, uh, at my house, and I cross it every day. You got a stream about that wide and about that deep, and it's a total flow of a total Lookout Creek that our drinking water, well, we pull our drinking water. Uh, and so it's, it's, it's a scary thing, uh, but, um, but, but the burning, please keep that on your mind. Rob was talking about positive, positive, we had a, a, a really positive week this week, and all of our commissioners been involved in this, uh, we, uh, we had a little program there for the, well, it turned out to be a big program.
Big.
Boy, I know, I didn't, never dreamed it would be, but we, uh, gave all of our, uh, elementary-age students, made sure that they got, um, some nice pumpkins, we had a pumpkin patch over this year, and, and a corn maze, had a corn maze for the children. And I really, I didn't, I mean, I knew we had eight hundred plus kids here, and I don't know, about two sixty or seventy. But with the parents and everything, we had, um, at one time, we had almost well over eighty cars parked out there in that field. Uh, you know, and then we had all the buses coming in, and we had at one time probably at least, um, fifteen hundred, two thousand people, I mean, it's, it was amazing. And I never, I didn't hear one, I didn't hear one sour or negative person, did you? Even the grandma, even the grandma.
The maze wasn't big enough.
And even when we were at Davidson out here, you know, and we've got, she's got several hundred, the principal told me yesterday, uh, just a big guard bag of thank you cards from the parents, grandparents, and the kids, and and, uh, then I got some in the office today, and so it's just a, it's, it's just a positive thing, I couldn't believe it. I knew it was gonna be a good thing, but I just, uh, and, and also mother nature worked with us, it made it a special day, because it wasn't a cloud in the sky. And, uh, they're wanting to next year, uh, actually do an all-day event with the, with the elementaries, that's, you know, kindergarten all the way through, preschool all the way through fifth, and, uh, that's gonna, we'll work with them on that. But it's just, uh, and also the schools are always contacting us now, now that they know what's over there, you know, from, uh, elementary, middle school, about these field trips and all this stuff, you know, and even high school, you know, Josh Engel just, he didn't, he just couldn't believe that that place existed, and it belongs to us. The actual people of Dade County. So, um, it's just a special, special day, special place, and if you, if you don't know where it's at, you need to go and, and, and go there, and it's real easy to find. Open, the gates open, they're unlocked, you know, the, the walk gate, we had to shut the, uh, big gate at night or whatever, because we had some four-wheel drives get in there and kinda messed up some things when it was raining one night and tore a lot of things, but anyway, and it's open for you, it's you, and it's, it's, there's, it's almost a little over a mile of Lookout Creek right there. Uh, that's some of the prettiest part of Lookout Creek that you'll ever see. So, you know, go over and spend the whole day and, and, and take your dog, or your grandchild, grandchildren, or your wife, and just walk around and, and enjoy that, because it, it belongs to you. One of the teachers said, you know, this is a, this is kind of the central park of Dade County, and I said, I didn't believe, said, you know, and if you don't know what, I didn't, not familiar with central park that much, but evidently, New York, it's a big, you know, it's big, you know, and so it's a place that, um, it's just special, and you'll see when you go over there. And, uh, there's no, no trespassing signs there or anything anymore, it's, it's, it's open to our people, so, anyway. We do, um, Billy's kinda, uh, have, have helped up on our paving, we got to kind of the end of it, we're looking at some other, uh, some money now and all to see what we've got, and hopefully we get back on that, but uh, one of the biggest reasons it kinda pulled us away too was, uh, uh, Philip mentioned the power companies, you know, they're, they're kinda was right in the middle, even when we were doing Wells Road, it was kind of a touchy thing out there. Uh, and when they start, they're, they're moving with it, and you can't just say, okay, give us a week here, a week there, we can't, can't do that, so we are gonna pick that back up, uh, you know, and, and what, we won't be able to do a whole lot more paving because of our funds and because of our money and our money we've got, but uh, we'll finish that up before it gets really, really cold weather, and before they stop running asshole. We got, uh, I mentioned this a month or so ago, uh, and I know if any of you lived on the north end and tried to get into Chattanooga, even during weekday, I was trying to get there Monday, and, and highway eleven was backed all the way up, freeway was backed up, interstate two, or two ninety-nine. GDOT has, it takes time, but they're working on some type of plan up there, on that, on that, right there where that intersects. GDOT has, it takes time, but they're working on some type of plan up there on that, on that, right there where that intersects with Highway eleven, uh, of, of what they're going to do with it. And hopefully, you know, by, by spring anyway, hopefully before the winter's out, they can tell us kind of what's going on, uh, of what they're, what they're planning on doing. And also, we're tied right in with this road project through our metropolitan, uh, Chattanooga, of all the road, um, projects they've got going in Chattanooga, all that is bleeding right into Georgia. And so there's plans through GDOT too to come on into the Tennessee line out of Marion County on into, because all that bottlenecks, you know? And, uh, even though if you don't travel the interstate, you get on eleven and you hit what I hit the other day. So, so that is happening, you know, I mean, it's just a, and, uh, just, um, a lot going on. You know, we got Thanksgiving, of course, coming up. Um, you know, it's, it's a big, big holiday for everyone. And then before you know it, we got Christmas. And, uh, so hopefully, and I've talked to some of these contractors that, that Philip mentioned. And, uh, you know, for holidays, they're going to kind of let off a little bit because it is been, I've had more complaints, you know, in the last few weeks because when you get up in the morning, you try to go to work and you don't realize, okay, my road's closed. Okay, and I come in and I'm on Wells and I've got to go all the way around, you know, five miles to get where I'm going or whatever. It's, 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 but it's just temporary. I tell people. But I've had some pretty good, uh, chewings and some cussings, I guess you might say, my, you know, but because it does, it makes so many, makes people, and I can understand it. But there are the holidays, they've talked, we've talked to them and they're going to kind of let up a little bit where, you know, it won't really disturb us, you know, hopefully and all, you know, during Thanksgiving and during the Christmas holidays. Y'all got anything you want to bring up?
Yeah, I got two more. I was talking with Stephen Bonico yesterday and he did say we were in a level three drought and they are allocating money for hay. So if you, you're a cattle farmer and you need hay, they are allocating money for it. And I think they're going to set up down here in the commission office one day to take applications for that. Also, uh, I've not got the date yet, but I am going to do the Veterans Dinner again this year in December. It'll be one of the Saturdays in the month and we're probably going to add police and fire to that this year to get more people together and more conversation with a bunch of the citizens of the county.
That's good, good thing.
So if the dates make, now we'll have the date set for that.
And, and speaking of, of the fire, real quick, I know we've been here a long time, but, uh, uh, this is something the commission, we may be forced kind of to look at. Uh, we are not, uh, we don't have to comply with the burn ban in the state of Georgia. There's about eight, eight counties that don't, uh, when the actual, you know, burn ban comes in yearly. But this is something in the next few weeks, if we don't get any rain, it may come to, down to our people, us, the governing authority, to come in and put a burn ban for a week or so until this rain comes in. Because if y'all were here, most, a lot of, most of you are here, you know, back, you know, uh, when we had over, almost half of Dade County was burning. Uh, you know, and, uh, in the south end anyway. So we can't let that happen, you know? So, uh, that's something we're just going to play day to day, you know, and, uh, so we'll, we'll of course keep everybody informed on that. But we do have the authority to do that if we have to. Uh, hopefully we won't. Hopefully we'll have, you know, interest soil raining and get back to the regular fi- fall. So, anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there too. Okay, anybody else, you got anything? Okay, alright. Alright, let's move down to Ms., uh, Laura Beth Cunningham. For weights.
Audrey told me I better make it quick. She must be hungry. So this next Monday, we're going to have our yearly chick-to-chicken project show and sell the champions. And that's where the kids got their chicks in May. They were a day old and they've raised them to laying hens. And they bring their best three and we have, we're going to have Ms. Brenda Jackson from Gordon County come over and judge them. And then we auction them off. Um, and it's, this is a fundraiser for the kids. The kids get to keep that money that the bidders bid on. Um, so it's really fun to see their faces because we usually have some businesses come in and purchase those top two and that's usually about.
And that was, that was one of the.
It's Monday.
Oh, Monday and it's on poultry. Is that what you said?
Uh-huh, yeah, it's chickens. They have, those are the chickens.
That rooster that year, isn't it?
Those are the chickens they have this year. They're golden lace wine dots and silver lace wine dots. Um, but usually the champion pen of chickens sells for five hundred dollars and the kids get that back and it, just to see their faces when they, we write on that check. It's, it's really fun. I really, this is one of my favorite projects. Um, the homeschoolers, this last month, we talked about, we're doing the scrambled states, states of agriculture and we talked about Tennessee bats and how important they are to agriculture. And most people don't know that, but bats are very important. Um, and this next month, we're going to talk about my former home state of Kansas, um, and the wheat and sorghum and all of that stuff. And they've been really affected by the drought too. So we'll get to see the effects of that. Um, craft night, this last, we had it last Friday. Um, and I've, I'm terrible about remembering to take pictures when I'm doing stuff with them, but we made these little puffy ghosts for, um, their Halloween decorations. And this next month, we're going to make little scarecrows for Thanksgiving decorations. And the next Tree City meeting is November tenth at twelve P M. at the Ag Center. Um, so Ms. Eloise would really appreciate it if anybody wants to come out and donate their time to Tree City. Um, we have this new fundraiser going on. It's something that the Extension Service is trying. And we've partnered with the Front Door Produce. It's kind of like, you know, every plate and where they ship food to your house. Well, this is a twenty-pound box of produce. Um, I go and I pick them up and they're straight out of the field. I will pick them up on the second day that they've been pulled out of there. So you can't buy produce in the store even this fresh. Um, it's a twenty-pound box. It's going to include green beans, bell peppers, jalapenos, corn, cucumbers, citrus, yellow squash and zucchini. It's thirty dollars a box. Um, and the four-H club gets ten of that back. So it's a, it's a really good fundraiser for us. And it's pretty hands-off because, um, you do it all online. So.
Oh, you do, you, you actually, when you purchase it, you need to go online and purchase it?
Yes, you go online, you can scan this QR code.
Pick it up at the.
And then, yes. So I don't have a delivery date yet. It's right before Thanksgiving. So the box does get here before Thanksgiving. Um, but then we just call everybody and you come and get your box.
What about if someone came and just wanted to buy one? So you got it, you got it.
You have to do it.
Do it online. You can't go and bring you fifty dollars and buy two boxes.
Yeah, they, yeah, you have to pre-order it and then I'll let you know when you can come pick it up. Um, the next tri-state cattleman's meeting is going to be our annual Christmas banquet. We're not going to have a meeting in November, um, because it's usually the third week, but the, um, banquet's going to be, I think, December second. Yes. So they're really close together. So no November meeting. Um, that's when they do their steak dinner. It's twenty-five dollars. They have, um, live singing. I'm not sure who they've gotten yet. Um, and then they're going to have a silent auction this year. So that's something.
Is that going to be in, in Rock Springs?
It will. No, no, it's here. They always do, yeah, they do the banquet here. Um, the beekeepers meeting, meeting will be November twentieth at seven P M. at the Ag Center. And they did not give us a topic this time. That's all I got.
Any questions?
I wouldn't, I wasn't trying to be rude. I was just looking at your P R code and see how easy it was to.
Oh, yeah, you use the camera and it pops up. It's really easy. Um, if somebody needs a website though, I can email that out. There is a website. But the QR code's pretty popular and it's, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, they're getting too popular, I'm afraid.
Yeah, it's, it's very popular. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Hawthorne, library, anyone?
Oh, yeah, we got the online, that's fine.
Yep, yeah. Online presentation here.
Maybe not.
No way?
No, I just something to look at.
A reminder of the Christmas parade.
Okay.
We can flip through them if you would like, but there's no.
No, it's just online.
Yeah, it's.
So they're not, okay, last, last month, we did a online here, you know, so, okay. I think that, like you said, the big thing they want to remind you too is the, is the Christmas parade and all that. And, okay, alright.
No entry fee or anything, no registration, any of that. A lot of people call me and want to know how much it costs. It was free. You don't have to bill. We would like to be notified to kind of have an idea about how many. And it's the second Saturday night this year in December.
Okay, alright.
Carrie, did you get that?
Second Saturday.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I just didn't know if the people could hear.
No, I don't think they, they click on the mic.
It's the second Saturday of December. You do not need a fee. You just need to let them know so you could, uh, go, be in the, yeah, just keep, keep in a head count of how many, how many participants. Yeah, okay. No fee.
What about the alliance? You got, have you got a live, a live, a presentation that's online?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, move down here to Mr. Don Townsend, five A. Her monthly finance report, please.
Let me say one thing about the Christmas parade. That's the second Saturday, not the second, because the second falls on the first Saturday. That gets a little confusing anyway. Uh, just to clarify that, the first Saturday at six P M. is the grand illumination uh, here, uh, or all of Trenton actually. And then the second Saturday is the Christmas parade. Alright. Uh, on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the agenda as amended to add six B. And that is the AEDs. And then also, we'll be removing from the agenda five D, which was the Industrial Development Authority, and moving it over to the regular agenda. Right, to vote on separately. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong world. I'm in, I've already jumped to the consent agenda. I'm trying to expedite this meeting. Alright, we'll go to the financial. Thanks, Rob, and I'm sorry. Christmas parade threw me all off. Alright, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, the, uh, balance of the general fund was one million, one hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars. We have one point five million in reserve. So it's two point, uh, two million, six hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars part of the general fund. Federal asset fund, US Treasury is zero. Uh, share special fund, four thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars. Drug abuse education fund, seven thousand, five hundred one dollar. The supplemental juvenile services fund, twenty-nine thousand, fifty-four dollars. Victim assistance fund, three thousand, seventy-eight dollars. Jail fund, fourteen thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars. Federal asset fund department of justice is zero. American rescue plan has a balance of one million, two hundred thirty thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Accommodation, hotel tax, two hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars. Employee flexible spending account, thirty-eight thousand, seven oh six. Payroll account, fifty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars. In two thousand fifteen, splot, we have ninety-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollar balance. And in two thousand twenty-one, splot, projects count of eighty-five thousand, nine hundred nineteen dollars. And then the proceeds account of two million, two hundred ten thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars. I'm looking at the income statement as of September thirtieth. Uh, we co-, uh, re-received eight hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy thousand dollars. We had budgeted eight hundred six thousand, six hundred forty-one. So we were in excess funds of twenty-two thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars. Uh, the actual year-to-date, uh, was, we had collected two million, one hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. Had projected to collect two million, three thousand, six hundred fifty-three sorghum, in excess of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. For expenses for September, uh, through September thirtieth, and, uh, well, no, as of September, for the thirty-day period, we spent one million, two hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty dollars. We'd budgeted one million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars. So we were under budget, seventy-eight thousand, fourteen dollars. Year-to-date, we've spent three hundred forty, three million, four hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars. Budgeted three hundred, three million, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars. So we were under budget, two hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred six dollars. Uh, budget attained so far should it be at twenty-five percent, but revenues attained so far is at fifteen point three, three percent. And expenses attained were at twenty-four point one, one percent. Uh, the local option sales tax received for the month was two hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred, six hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. And the splot, uh, special purpose local option sales tax revenues for October was three hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Looking at splot tracking, you'll see that so far, again, three million, three hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred five dollars has been expensed. And under the two thousand twenty-one splot, at this point, I don't think anything has been expensed under fire services, uh, that we see there. And then under the two thousand fifteen splot, uh, nothing's changed, I don't think really from the last month. Um, but you will note on the second, down at the bottom there for fire services, there is a balance of sixty-three thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars. Probably should have talked about that before we spent the ARPA and maybe we, y'all need to consider that. But that's sixty-three thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars. That really needs to be closed out. The auditors are here and they did note that the other day, that that needs to go away because it's way past time for it to go away. And the year-to-date tax collection for this, tax commissioner's office, uh, is currently at eight point six, seven percent. Collected at five million, uh, five hundred forty-one thousand, no, five hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars. Um, that's the revenue collected so far. So that's at eight point six, seven percent. That concludes the report.
Okay. Alright. Have any questions for, for Townsend? Dan? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report as presented. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goff. I have a second.
Second.
Heartline, okay. Have a motion, second call of vote. Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Hartline?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, motion carries. Alright. Rob, when you got anything on, you need to.
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, this, uh, the meeting, the reading of the minutes of the last regular meeting and any special call meetings will be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance. Minutes are public record and available for viewing in the county commission office. The minutes are included in consent agenda and, uh, we will, we will be considered for approval under new business. I want to ask Mr. Don Townsend if he would go over our consent agenda and we will entertain a motion for turning of the.
Now we'll do this. Approval of the agenda as amended to add six B, again, as the, for AEDs, the purchase of AEDs under ARPA. And also the, um, removal from this agenda, the regu-, to the regular agenda, the industrial development authority, uh, request for funds. So, uh, the approve, also approval of the previous meeting minutes, the revenue, I'm sorry, review of personal status report, approval proclamation for adoption awareness, awareness month of November. Proclamation for the month of November also is hospice month. Resolution R dash thirty-eight dash twenty-three, and that is the reappointment of DL Moore to the alcoholic beverage control board for a term of four years commencing January first, two thousand twenty-four, expiring twelfth, thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven. Um, appointment of Robert Russell for a four-year term. Uh, that's a reappointment under resolution R dash thirty-nine dash twenty-three. Uh, the second day of November, I'm sorry, January first, two thousand twenty-four, expires twelfth, thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven. We have the purchase of two vehicles plus the equipment for Dade County Sheriff's Office, uh, that's Ford, from Prater Ford, who won the bid for the purchase of those two, two thousand twenty-three Ford Explorers. Uh, and the value, the amount is limited to one hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars. We have volunteer f- fire service. I'm gonna let Rebecca call this one.
Okay, so it was for, yeah, thank God. Okay, the purchase of three, um, what, can I call them fire trucks, uh, from Tactical Fire, what is, how do you say?
Toyin.
Toyin Inc. Um, the first fire truck with the cost of the truck plus the chassis discount if we buy it ahead, you know, when it's delivered. Um, the price for that truck is four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred one dollars for trucks number two and three, including that chassis discount and the multiple purchase discount. Uh, the price of both of those are four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and one dollars for a total cost of one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. Do you want the breakout? Splosh and ARPA.
So we'll use splosh first and then the remaining from ARPA, A, ARPA, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, also the AEDs, thirteen AEDs, I don't know what the brand was, but anyway.
Striker.
Striker, we'll put that in the minutes. And, uh, that's for, uh, various county buildings at twenty, a total of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars. That includes the case and the, everything. Um, I think that's it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, historic preservation, the courthouse preservation report by Coakins. Yeah, I always had that too. Yep.
Alright, any questions or corrections? Okay. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented by Mr. Townsend. I have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lowery. Call a vote, Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Torthline?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Chair of Ouchess. Okay, thank you. We need to, just need to go in.
Mr. Chairman, we also need to vote on, oh, new business, the IDA request for one hundred twenty thousand.
That's right, because we changed the, that's right.
Yeah.
All right, I entertain a motion pertaining to the request from the IDA for a hundred and twenty thousand to be spent jointly with a water improvement and also the city sewer department. Whereas forty-five thousand, that will go toward the water, and then the rest to the city for the sewer. So have a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Lowery. Call a vote, Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Chair of Ouchess, Mr. Torthline?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay, thank you. All right. All right. As I said, I need to, we need to do a real quick executive session. We've been here a long time. You Phil Artlamont?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Need a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, call a vote, Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Torthline?
Yes.
Bradford, Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Lowery?
Yes.
And Chair of Ouchess. And this is to discuss options on litigation and also some real estate.
We have a question, but I think.